Uh huh.
Miguel, are you back there? Thank you. You ready?
You might want to...
One in the same.
Okay.
Counsel, if you will come to order. It is 7:00 PM and we do have a quorum. All members are present. In just a moment, I will ask you to stand. We'll be led in an invocation this evening by Park and Recreation Director Adam Adams, and then be led in our pledges by Mayor Protem Lamont, and we'll say the pledge to the US flag and then the pledge to the Texas flag. Would you please stand?
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we're thankful for the ability tonight to convene a meeting, starting with your name. We pray that you give wisdom and guidance to all deliberations and decisions that are made tonight. We pray that you protect all those that defend this country, both at home and abroad. We thank you for all the things you've blessed this community with and this nation. We pray for mercy and grace and continued prosperity of this country. We thank you for all these things. In the name of Jesus, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas' flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. Before we do citizens' presentations, our town manager, Stephen Seidel, wanted to introduce a new employee to the council.
Yes, mayor and council and our town residents, I would like to introduce our new HR manager, Carmel Fritz. She started last week. And comes to us from Baylor Scott &amp; White, and I know in her first week, she's already done quite a bit sorting through many things and getting us on track. We have open enrollment right now, so it's a busy time to come on, and I know that Stephen and April Ezell, who were kind of taking on HR duties interim, are glad to have her, and as am I and the rest of the staff. So, welcome Carmel.
Thank you Carmel. Nice to have you with us. It is time for citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it's posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that indicates topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. Holly, did we have anyone sign up tonight?
We do. Ms. Jennifer?
Alright. Jennifer, you identify yourself and your address, please.
Jennifer Windmills, Seven Overhill Drive. And I just wanted to bring to your attention something about the medians on the other side. Okay, we had the whole dirt thing put in. Well, I've been doing some research and I stop and I ask all the people working there, well, somebody in town... Oh, and I did call the city manager, but I have not had the privilege of having him call me back. So, I did try to verify a bunch of stuff with him. But, somebody changed the sprinkling system on the other side from what the landscaper had drawn. So, a bunch of the plants have died. Already, they're brand new. So now, from what I understand, the struggle is between who's going to replace the plants. And now, they've gone over there, and I sent you guys all pictures. The weeds were this tall. Nobody's taking care of the median. The weeds were this tall. They got pulled, you know, I don't know who did it. But here's the other thing. Okay, they pulled all the dead plants. Now who's going to replace all those dead plants? And from what I understand, the struggle is, the town says, "We don't need, we shouldn't do it. The landscaper should do it." The landscaper says, "No, the town did not go by what we said to water, so it's not getting enough water." So, and there was dirt all over the drive, all over the street this weekend. You know, to me, that's unacceptable. And I sent you guys all a thing from Neil Sperry, where he talked about how grass is good. And grass helps with keeping the soil more moist than just leaving it dirt. I know that that median was approved under the last council and the last town manager, but they've all been voted out for a reason, because nobody liked that. So, I really think we need to do something about this. I don't know if you guys knew that there was a struggle and that somebody messed with the sprinkling system. So whoever's in charge of deciding when the sprinkling system goes in for the town, really screwed things up, from what I'm gathering. And like I said, I haven't had the chance to talk to Stephen, although I did leave him messages. So, I just wanted to let you guys know what my findings were, and hopefully, we can get this resolved. I mean, it looks horrible over there now. There's a plant here, and a plant here, and a plant here, and a plant here. It's pathetic. Oh, and I did find out. Did you know that the guy who did the landscaping actually does the landscaping in Westlake? So we could have had pretty medians like the ones in Westlake, because that guy knows what he's doing. And remember when I came to you guys before they put all the vegetation in? And I said, "Hey, let's talk to Westlake," because Westlake said they would help us out with the vegetation and having the green and having how pretty it looks over there. I don't care what Keller looks like. I don't care what some of the other cities look like. Westlake looks awesome. And we should have gone with help from Westlake. But if this landscaper knows what he's doing, it seems like there's quite the issue going on there. So, I just wanted to let y'all know what my findings were and see if we can maybe get something worked out. Thank you very much.
Which median? Is that the one with...
The brand new one over there by the bridge. There's like four or five of them.
Yeah, I know. Right over there.
Yeah.
Which one? Is it all of them? I mean, the one that you've had the problems with the flowers?
Well, the weeds were right across from where the cul-de-sac is. That's where all the tall weeds. They were as tall as me. I had my son take a picture of me next to the weeds.
Okay.
Because they were that tall. Because I knew you guys wouldn't believe me if I wasn't in the picture. And that's why I sent y'all the picture. Well, it did get the weeds...
There was a, there was an accident there Saturday, Sunday, I think, or maybe Monday. Anyway, a tree, trees like this. I don't know if they knew about it. Do you all know about that, I guess?
I didn't know about the tree, but I can tell you that the plants, the contractor has agreed to replace the plants, and we're waiting on delivery. They were supposed to be Friday, but we're taking delivery of the new plants, and...
Are they going to be as thick as they were? Because I mean, it was pathetic over there with the plants. Now it's really sad now.
Well, they're going to replace the plants, and we've worked with the contractor to try to identify some, at different spots, some different plants that may work better. Of course, you always, you know...
Are we going to improve the sprinkling system? Because I've heard that's a big issue, too. Whoever messed with the sprinkling system really messed stuff up.
So, we've worked on that, and then, you know, my wife, she hates landscaping because she wants everything to be really full and mature, and I tell her that we would go broke if I had to buy the full-size plants for everything in my yard. And so, that's the same thing with us, is that everything we buy is not always fully mature, and you have to allow those plants to grow and have space. So a lot of that is spacing based upon those plants. It will grow in to be full. It just won't be right now.
Well, they were full before.
Yeah, and that's what our plan is. We want it to make it look nice, too.
And you know, I don't like the dirt. The grass would have been... And I sent you guys all that thing from Neil Sperry that said, "Grass is better than dirt." Grass would be better than the dirt with keeping everything going, you know? But it's fallen on deaf ears a lot, you know? So, and I did try to call you to verify all this stuff, but I didn't get a phone call back, so...
I think you said, "If I had further questions, to call you." And I understood what your complaints were, because I also had your email, in which I communicated to the town council and to Adam about what we needed to do.
Okay. Because somebody from the town called me and said, "Well, he said he didn't, that he wasn't going to call you, and I had to call you." You know, and that's kind of like when I go in a grocery store and I want to talk to the manager about a problem, and they send me to the meat manager. To me, that doesn't do anything. You know, I would have appreciated if you would have called me and said, "Hey, I'm going to do this and this and this." You know, I just would have appreciated some communication. That would have been nice.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Alright, the next person is Susan Edstrom. Susan?
Susan Edstrom, 269 Oak Hill Drive. Oh no, this is for... Oh, sorry. You're good. So, I'm here to ask you to give me a little bit of leeway to work with Chief and Kelly. About 18 months ago, I attended a coyote seminar hosted by the Humane Society of Flower Mound, put on by the Humane Society of the United States about coyotes. Wanted to have it done this past spring, and would have been great because of all the problems we had. Problems haven't diminished. I don't expect them to diminish. We've had a rash of lost cats, probably coyote food. And the residents are looking for information on how to deal with coyotes as predators and what they can do. It only costs $500. HSUS comes in and they run the public forum for you. In addition, they come in during the day and they work with police officers as well, how to deal with the problem, how to deal and help residents. We can invite Roanoke so that Roanoke officers can participate as well. But, we ebb and flow. We've lost about a half a dozen cats in the last six days, all basically in the same area, over by Lakeview. And as we know, over by Byron, there's been reports, for at least the last year, of coyotes over in that area. So, I'm happy to set it up. I just need Kelly's assistance in making sure we have the officers available, and if they want to invite Roanoke, they can, but sooner than later would be better. And so, I'm offering to be the point person for HSUS, but I do need Kelly and Chief's, you know, buy-in and assistance so that we can get that done.
Thank you, Susan. Yes, you got a question?
Yeah.
Just not hard ones, okay?
So, at the end of the day, is this just an educational seminar?
Yes.
And is it an educational seminar that'll teach our police officers and animal control officers how to do away with the coyotes?
No. No, not do away with.
Okay.
Okay. HSUS is pretty firm about that, as am I. There are studies. You can't get rid of them. If you displace them, if you try to relocate them, what happens is, that next spring, instead of having one or two kits, they'll have six. Animals are amazing that way. They just respond to what's happening to them internally. So, trying to eradicate them by relocation or other means doesn't work. Because all that means is, the next spring, they're just going to have more babies to replace. Yes.
So, is this for the public consumption also, to teach them how to keep their pets indoors at certain times of the day and stuff like that?
Yeah, so it talks about keeping your pets indoors. It talks about hazing. They provide screenshots of different things, applications that you can apply to fences so that they can't, you know, jump over the fences and those types of things. But it's really educational so that people understand, and, you know, don't... Simple things, but don't leave food out, don't, you know... But to hear it from HSUS hopefully has a little bit more weight than me posting it on my website. I've posted the links to HSUS for hazing and things that people can do. But I think it's just something from a, there is an appetite within Trophy Club to have some type of a forum for people to give them information. And HSUS, like I said, it's very economical. They come in and they do the whole thing for you, the entire day, for $500.
Susan, for those who, possibly because of work or other commitments, who could not attend that seminar, would that agency be willing to post something on social media or make it available on the town website that people could sign on and watch a video presentation and so on?
They do have some of those materials online, and depending on where we hold it. So if we host it here or at Byron, as long as we have the ability to utilize the social media or the video equipment that's in that room, we would do that. Absolutely. Yeah.
So, one other question.
Go ahead.
If we put this on a future agenda item to discuss this, and I'm okay with what you're saying, but I think I'd like to talk about it later, maybe have you and the SRO come and talk to us about...
The ACO.
ACO, sorry.
I knew what you meant. That's okay.
We got coyotes.
Those three-letter acronyms, just, you know...
Heard it was bad.
There're bobcats there.
But would you be willing to come?
There you go.
Bobcats there. Would you be willing to come back and talk to us?
I'm always willing to come back and talk to you guys. Absolutely.
I think, I think we should add that, because I think it is an issue. I've heard about it from a couple people. Thank you.
Okay. And second thing, I know that there is a special thing that's being put together for September 11th. I did ask, and I'm hoping that my ask was, can be accommodated. I know that they were intending to do a balloon release, but from a animal advocate perspective, I asked not to do that. I sent information along about all of the wildlife that can be negatively impacted by that, with string and those kinds of things. Birds getting tangled up and perish because they can't get out of them and those types of things. I did find out today Chinese lanterns are biodegradable. You can release those, and they disintegrate in the air. There's nothing that falls back down that would have an impact on any of the wildlife in the area, so...
Thank you for bringing that up, Susan.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I know. Balloon launches are not good things.
Right. So I appreciate that. So if we could accommodate that, I'd be greatly...
Alright, thank you.
And I can supplement that balloon launch issue from an aviation perspective, having spent almost four decades in it. Jet engines and balloon ingestion are not good things.
Yeah.
And so...
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Alright, that's all I show that signed up for citizens' presentations. Anybody else want to speak that didn't sign up? Alright, seeing none, no one will move on. The consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have items one through five. Does anybody on council want to remove any of those items?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove or pull items two and five.
Alright, Councilmember Lamont wants to pull two and five. Anyone else? Alright. I would then entertain a motion to approve item one. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the minutes dated August the 11th, 2015. Item three, consider and take appropriate action regarding financial invariance report dated July 2015. And item four, consider and take appropriate action regarding an interlocal cooperative agreement between the town and Denton County for fiscal year 2015-2016, shared governance, communication, and dispatch services system, and authorizing the mayor his designate to execute all necessary documents. Do I have a motion for one, three, and four?
I saw a motion.
Second.
Alright. Garrett Reed moves, and seconded by Perro. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Unopposed, it is unanimous. We will go back to item two. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the fifth modification of the executive contract for solid waste and recycle materials collection, transportation, and disposal services for the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, and authorizing the mayor his designate to execute all necessary documents. Councilmember Lamont wanted to remove that. Greg?
It's not my intent to discuss this, just that I voted no for this item. So to vote yes on a consent agenda would give the impression that I'm for it. So if someone just make a motion for it, then we'll just cast our votes again.
Alright, anyone wishing to move the approval of item two?
I saw a motion.
Alright. Councilmember Reed moves.
Second.
Seconded by Perro. Alright, discussion. Greg, do you want to have any discussion?
No.
Alright. All those in favor of item two, approving the modification to the contract, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Lamont is opposed. Everyone else is for. It does pass. Item number five, consider and take appropriate action regarding an ordinance of the town repealing Article 16 entitled Citizens Financial Advisory Board of Chapter One Administration of the Code of Ordinances and adopting a new Article 16, Budget Administration and Fiduciary Oversight of Chapter One Administration of the Code of Ordinances, and providing an effective date. Does Mr. Lamont want to state anything about why he removed it?
First of all, I appreciate the fact that we put in 1603 at the dais. Because that was one of my concerns, that in bringing this up, we were going to have a subcommittee, and that wasn't in the original agenda item that went out. As far as 1601 and 1602, I don't think they're necessary. They're already in the charter when the voters voted for this in 2009, so it's kind of a redundancy. This ordinance should just stay as is, as far as I'm concerned, 1603. If you look, we can go back over it, but in, for instance, in 9.02, Submission Budget, it's already in the charter. And I don't feel there's a reason to put it back in this ordinance. And I can go down the list, but I just don't see the need to use 1601 or 1602 to be placed in the...
Alright. So does anyone wish to make a motion in reference to this?
Well, I'll make a motion. Make a motion. Is it amendment, Mr. Mayor?
It's a motion at this point.
To approve 2015-25 without Section 1601 and 1602.
Alright, so, council, I'm going to take a second to look at that. I'm not sure you all needed to or not. Oh, so actually, it's...
If you go to...
Alright, I see it.
9.02 is submission of the budget, so it's already in the charter.
All of 1601 and all of 1602.
Yeah. 9.04 already has expenditures, expenditures might not exceed revenue. 9.05 has a public hearing, has amendments or can be adopted. 9.06 has supplemental appropriations, emergency appropriations.
You're referring to Charter section.
Charter, right. So it's already in the charter, so we're putting it back into this ordinance. I just, I mean, I'm not terribly opposed to it, but I just think it's just redundancy that doesn't need to be in a ordinance, that you got to cipher through all this stuff to get to what we really want to do, and that's accomplish a subcommittee of the council.
Alright. So any discussion?
There's no second.
No, I have a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did anybody second the motion? Thank you. Mr. Schaffner, Councilmember Schaffner, for... Alright, so I don't see anyone giving a second, so the motion dies for lack of a second. Anyone like to make a motion now?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2015-25 as presented at the dais.
Second.
Councilmember Schaffner moved, and Councilmember Rowe seconded that we approve ordinance 2015-25 as presented. In the packet are, oh, it's at our...
The dais.
The dais. Okay. Any discussion? Alright, hearing none. Call for the vote. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous. Okay. We will then move into a public hearing. It is 7:23. And we will convene the public hearing for item six, conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed fiscal year October 1, 2015 to September 30, 2016 budget, pursuant to Section 9.05 of the Town Charter, making appropriations and providing for expenditures. Citizens and councils, we're approving a budget that shows $12,421,419 in revenue and $20,831,787. I mean, 20 million. I said the wrong thing, I think, while ago, didn't I? 12 million, 421,419 in revenue, 20 million, 831,787 in expenditures, which includes $8,993,531 for capital improvements that were approved previously. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Alright, hearing none, we'll go to item seven. Conduct the second public hearing regarding the proposed tax rate for fiscal year October 1, 2015 to September 30, 2016, and mayor to announce the date, time, and place of the vote on the tax rate. The council will vote on September 22 at approximately 7:00 PM to approve a tax rate of .484 per $100 valuation that is comprised of .374 cents per $100 for maintenance and operation and .11 cents for interest and seeking. Anyone wishing to talk during this item? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing at 7:25 and move on to item eight. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a proclamation of the town council declaring September 2015 as attendance awareness month in Trophy Club. And the chair would recognize Councilmember Perro to read the proclamation and for a motion.
Town of Trophy Club, Texas, proclamation number 2015-14. A proclamation of the town council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, establishing the month of September 2015 as attendance awareness month in Trophy Club. Whereas, good attendance is essential to student achievement and graduation, and we are committed to dedicating our resources and attention to reducing chronic absenteeism rates with a focus starting as early as pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. And whereas, chronic absence, missing 10% or more of school for any reason, including excused and unexcused absences, or just two of three days a month, is a proven predictor of academic trouble and dropout rates. Whereas, improving attendance and reducing chronic absence takes commitment, collaboration, and tailored approaches to particular challenges and strengths in each community. And whereas, chronic absence predicts lower third-grade reading proficiency, course failure, and eventual dropout, it weakens our communities and our local economy. And whereas, the impact of chronic absence hits lower-income students and children of color particularly hard if they don't have the resources to make up for lost time in the classroom and are more likely to face systemic barriers to getting to school, such as unreliable transportation, lack of access to health care, unstable or unaffordable housing. And whereas, attendance gaps among groups of students often turn into achievement gaps that undermine student success. Chronic absence particularly exacerbates the achievement gap that separates low-income students from their peers, since students from low-income families are both more likely to be chronically absent and more likely to be affected academically by missing school. And whereas, absenteeism also undermines efforts to improve struggling schools, since it's hard to measure improvement in classroom instruction if students are not in class to benefit from them. And whereas, schools and community partners can reach out more frequently to absent students to determine what barriers they face to attending school and what would help them attend more regularly. Whereas, health care providers can share the importance of school attendance with families and can offer proactive prevention care to reduce absences and... Whereas, schools and districts must do more to track, calculate, and share the data on how many students are chronically absent so that we can see the attendance gaps and can deliver the right interventions to the right students. And whereas, all students, even those who show up regularly, are affected by chronic absence because teachers must spend time reviewing for students who miss lessons. And whereas, chronic absence can be significantly reduced when schools, families, and communities work together to monitor and promote good attendance and address hurdles that keep children from getting to school. Now therefore, I, Mayor C. Nick Sanders, in conjunction with the town council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, do hereby proclaim, our town will stand with the nation in recognizing September as attendance awareness month. We hereby commit to focusing on reducing chronic absenteeism to give all children an equitable opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive academically, emotionally, and socially. Specifically, we will, one, raise public awareness and concern about the impact of chronic absence; two, encourage broad community engagement and sustain civic action to help families get their children to school every day; three, urge school districts to analyze data to identify which students and schools are most affected by chronic absence, as well as to unpack common attendance challenges that need to be addressed; and four, encourage schools to publish chronic absenteeism data along with average daily attendance rates. Passed and approved by the Town Council of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, the 8th day of September 2015. And I move that this proclamation be passed.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Thank God.
Tim Kurtz, seconded. All, any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All in favor, show your hands. It is unanimous. Council would like to introduce to you John Slaven, if I said that right, or Slaven, could be... if I said that right, or Slaven, could be, will you stand? And Lisa Holman. Both of these people are here that had asked for the proclamation. John, did you wanna say anything to us? Come to the microphone if you do, please.
More so than anything, I just wanted to say thank you to the Town of Trophy Club for helping us put a spotlight on attendance awareness. They're a national organization. They're coast-to-coast. They work hard. Our school districts here in Texas are working hard to shine a spotlight on awareness and make sure our students are well taken care of. And we appreciate you backing us in this effort.
And you're with what organization, if you would announce?
Champions After School Program.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions of them? All right, John, if you wait just a second, I will give you the proclamation. And I see that April's not here tonight. So what that means is... Can you take a picture?
Where's your camera?
All right, Council, without objection, I would like to move item 12 up at this time. That is the consideration of issues related to the community garden. And there are a group of citizens here tonight, many of which are young people who are in school and need to go do homework, is my understanding, right? So as a courtesy to them, we'll try to deal with that item next. Any objection to that? All right, we'll go to item 12. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a non-exclusive use license agreement between the town and Keep Trophy Club Wild for the Community Garden Project at Harmony Park for town residents, providing terms of the agreement and authorizing the mayor his designate to execute all necessary documents. Stephen R. Stephen or Adam, does anybody wanna introduce this? Adam, I guess as Adam is introducing it, seems though you've got the nod.
Mayor and Council, this is staff bringing back, as you instructed at our last, at the last meeting concerning the garden, bringing back a contract with the changes that you had requested. All parties are here today to discuss the properties, and staff is prepared to discuss any of the particulars within the contracts, the garden rules, all those attachments that you have.
And is there a recommendation on the part of staff about location? Currently, what is, looks like, proposed in the agreement is the original location with modifications, and then there was the discussion in the packet about an alternate location.
That is correct, Mayor. Our staff did not make a recommendation. We just provided an alternate site that wasn't fully explored. I mean, as far as we originally, there'd been requests to look outside the Freedom Park area, the dog parks, and then staff recognized that there was an ability to move this location inside an underutilized training area within the dog park.
And so what I think is lacking, at least from my standpoint, is I couldn't really conceptualize the space as far as number of square feet that was proposed at Harmony and number of square feet that was available at the dog park.
I have that. Approximate, pretty close. Harmony Park's location, 3,500 square feet. Location within Freedom Dog Park would be 10,000.
10,000 square feet for the community garden?
Well, are available, I guess.
Available.
Yeah, available. Now, isn't there some percentage of that space at the dog park area, flowage? So is some of that not as usable?
It would be a very small portion of it, actually, because it's so near the parking lot. It's adjacent to the parking lot.
I think, I think both sites have their merits and pros and cons. You know, I think probably the, one of the biggest pros for Harmony is that there's already been some investment there and some work done there. However, logistics-wise, Harmony makes, I mean, Freedom Dog Park or Freedom Park makes a lot of sense because you're continuing to add uses to that area with the Dino Park, the dog area. So you're kinda creating a nice community park out of that one space. It does have water already there. It has a ability to lock with a gate, which is always something that we did have concerns with. And I know Councilmember Reed had some questions about that. So I think there's some inherent advantages. It's also closer to the parking lot. So if, as you bring your materials and supplies, you know, really for us, we can make anything happen and we'll work with whatever direction council would like to go if a community garden is in fact the direction council wants to go in. So that's the good discussion for tonight.
All right, good. So Council, if you, you know, we can go to your questions. I do have three citizens that signed up to speak. I don't know what they would say or after any discussion. So would open it up to you to see if you have any specific questions before I go to the citizens. Anybody?
I've got a couple of questions.
Garrett?
I wanna understand, I wanna understand what the Girl Scouts involvement is in this because to me, I have a hard time. Being in the public eye, you can quickly say, this is a Girl Scout project. Why aren't you guys moving forward with the Girl Scout project? And then you actually go through this document, right? And this document doesn't have anything to do with the Girl Scouts, right? So I would like somebody to explain to me what the Girl Scouts involvement is in this. Is there an alternative plan that the Girl Scouts can reach their goals and objectives that they need to reach outside of this project? And just shed a little bit of light on how that relationship works because I need to bifurcate the two. I need to be able to make a decision based on one thing, and I need to understand what the girls are doing. So if somebody can do a job of explaining that to me.
I believe they're gonna, they will have to represent themselves. I can, I can explain from a staff standpoint. Council had expressed that you wanted one point of contact, KTCW. So we accomplished that, working with them. The Girl Scouts throughout that project were, I would say, ran under them. It was a project that the Girl Scouts had achieved a goal through that process as well. But I believe the best way to do it is for council to talk to these parties.
So Lori, do you wanna represent, is Lori here? You wanna represent the Girl Scouts, or who wants to do that?
I can come up there with the girls and they have something they wanna say, and I can add to it, or I can answer any questions, or they can too.
All right, good. So is this Sydney that's gonna talk? All right, so y'all can come forward, and Sydney, say your full name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Sydney Barrow from Girl Scout Troop 3909. The troop's address is 19 Creek Court Drive. 119, sorry. Thank you for all for helping and supporting this project. We really appreciate all you've done. At this point, we have put 467 hours into this project, starting May of 2014. With assistance with Berna Sterlin...
Senneli.
Senneli and Bonnie Seraphine, local businesses and organizations, and residents and supporters, we were able to put this project together. After 15 months of research, planning, fundraisers, and diligent work, we are hoping to finish this project at Harmony Park. Thank you for all your time and attention.
All right, so stay there a minute. I'm not sure that we got all the answers that we wanted.
Okay, so that, that was helpful, thank you. So my question is this. What, first of all, tell me about what y'all are trying to achieve. Is there a, I'm a, I was a Boy Scout, so I understand merit badges, and so kinda translate.
So in Girl Scouts, there's three levels of different, I guess, awards you have to earn. There's Bronze Award, which we's already earned, and we're trying to earn our Silver, which is 50.
It's a little under the Eagle Scout Award.
It's like under.
And Gold Award is the same.
So it's community service hours is what you're looking for. Okay, so tell me, so far, have you all achieved your goal of community service hours by working on this project? So that's been achieved, and you guys are gonna be able to get your Silver award, is that right?
Yes.
So congratulations, good job. I know that stuff's not easy. And so now, y'all's desire is to, obviously, the work you put in this, you wanna see your project completed. I understand that, okay. So, but you have, you have achieved your, your awards, and you have gotten that stuff done, okay? I think that probably answers my questions. I appreciate it.
Council, anybody else have questions for them?
Uh, not for the Girl Scouts. I've got some others for the...
Can we determine, I think, location is gonna determine a lot, lot of questions that I have. And so maybe that's the first slice that we can try to determine.
Maybe.
So if nobody has any other questions for the Girl Scouts, I'll let them be seated. Yes, Lori, if you wanna say something, please do. Say your name and your address.
Okay, Lori Hicks, 119 Creek Courts Drive. My question, or my statement is, you know, versus, the Freedom Park versus Harmony Park. I think, I'm hoping, I would think that in the future, both would be good because there's no way someone who lives over by Byron Nelson Drive is going to want to drive all the way to Harmony Park. And we've already got people who are sponsors who put lots of money into this, who planned to have a plot at Harmony Park. Maybe they live over there, and now if we have it way over at Freedom Park, that's a long way for them to have to drive. Some people have put, different residents have put like $300 each already into it. And it would be a shame for them to have, put that money into it and then, you know, have them drive maybe 15 minutes. I mean, I, I think it's a 15-minute drive between them to get over there to water and plant. So I just wanted to mention that I think that Freedom Park would be a great future idea for another scout or any organization who wanted to do a future garden there, but having both of them in the future, you know? But anyway, I just wanted to mention it. I don't think we should consider one or the other, but maybe possibly consider both.
Thank you, Ms. Sydney. Y'all may be seated. All right, Council, do you have other questions? I still have two citizens to speak.
I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about the rules and regulations and make sure we're not setting up anything that could be problematic. On page 229 of the agenda packet in the rules, it refers to no loud music. It's a very compact area with a lot of different participants. And it says, "You may now play music or radio loud enough to be a nuisance to other gardeners. Please use earbuds." Should, should the earbuds be more of a requirement than a suggestion only because of the close proximity, different age groups, people with different interpretations of what loud and what's not loud and so on, neighbors living nearby? Could it be possible to have, if you wanna play music, use earbuds, period? Instead of having people playing radios and speakers and things of different channels and different volumes and stuff like that?
All right, that's part of the contract that we'll surely get to.
Okay.
And a good question. All of those are options that you could probably restrict based on the contract, if you want to.
Okay, well, I didn't know if you're gonna be talking about that now or later.
Yes. Yeah. So Philip, wanna say something, and then Greg?
No, I made my statement. I think we ought to pick one or the other. I can just tell you that I probably would vote against Harmony Park. So that's where I stand right now. I, I think that Freedom Park is a much better location. It's, it's not right up against neighbors, so we're not bothering anybody. It's, it's exactly what we wanted. It's fenced, it has water. And so just for me, my opinion is, we pick Freedom. But if we pick Harmony, I will vote against it, so just to let you know.
Mr. Lamont?
Yeah, I, I think Freedom Park changes the dynamics. It makes the contract much more viable and easier for the gardeners. So I'd like to make a motion to move the community garden to the alternate site located at Freedom Dog Park and open the contract with KTCW for discussion.
So state your motion again for me.
Move the community garden to the alternate site located at the Freedom Dog Park and open the contract with KTCW for discussion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion made by Councilmember, Mayor Protram Lamont, seconded by Councilmember Schaffner, that would move the location to Freedom Dog Park and not at Harmony Park. All right, now, before...
Can I say one thing about the motion?
Sure, go right ahead.
I wish that the person who made the motion would just do the first part and amend his motion. We can deal with the second part as we get into it. But I'd just, I'd rather establish...
My thinking was that if we do that, that's now in the contract, and we can discuss it. But I certainly would restate the motion, if you would like.
Well, I just think it's better just to deal with right now the location.
And I would agree with Philip from a procedural standpoint. The mayor can tell us we can discuss it.
I just wanna make sure that that was put into the contract that we're now negotiating a contract that still has Harmony Park in it because it mentions Harmony Park.
You'll amend the contract when you get to it, if you want to.
Just wanna make sure, okay.
So is the person who made the motion willing to amend their motion to say just move the location to the alternate site, which is Freedom Dog Park?
Yes, I am.
Is the second agree?
Yes.
All right, so the item before us is a motion to move the location from a location at Harmony Park to a location by Freedom Dog Park. Now I had, now I have three citizens who signed up to speak. I'll give them an opportunity to speak. If you wanna speak about this particular motion or if your motion is relative to the contract, you could state at that time that you're wanting to talk about the contract and well, wait and take your comments at that time. So the first person who signed up was Tom Powell. Mr. Powell, would you like to speak? State your name and address, please.
My name is Ted Powell.
Oh, Ted, I'm sorry.
12 Reading Court. And I say, good evening, you mayor, council, and staff. I, if I could vote, I would tell you that I would vote for this, too, that we move this to the dog park. But with, my whole point in this has been is that it, it gets very close to a residence, right? You move it to the park, as has been stated. Everything is there that you need, right? Now, one of the concerns that I had that was solved, that I think has been resolved tonight, was with the Girl Scouts. Now, based on what I just heard, they have earned enough to earn their award, right? So I don't think that is an issue anymore. Now, you could say that this was started by the Girl Scouts, so we had three. When they're gone, I don't know what happens. Do we get three more? I don't know. But I think if we go to the, to the dog park, I think that is a logical solution, this whole thing that we've been working on for quite some time now. So I would just appreciate everybody taking into consideration everything that was happening. And the one thing I always ask everybody, would you like to have this next to your residence? And I think that you have to stop and think about that because I would tell you guys, just on, that people who come to our house have referred to this, everything from a, a very unattractive site to a graveyard. They wanna know, what are we gonna do? Start planning? We're gonna start this as a graveyard? We have the place out here to bury people? So, I mean, that's the kinda reaction it gets. So I would just ask you all to think about this very seriously and, and accept the motion and the second that has been made to move this to the dog park.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Now, the next person who wanted to speak was, did you have a question for him?
No.
Next person who wanted to speak was Judy Powell. Judy, no, okay. And then the other person I had was Lerue Corbin. Do you wanna say something, Ms. Corbin?
Yes, naturally.
Please identify yourself and your address, please.
I'm Lerue Corbin. I am a member of, of the board of Keep Trophy Club Wild. And I live at 405 Hilltop here in Trophy Club. So a couple of things I wanted to point out, and it really kinda, part of it has to do with the contract, part of it has to do with the location. I'd like to pass this out, if I may.
Sure. So are you gonna talk about location or contract?
Both.
Can I get you the limit, just location, till we deal with this matter, and then you can surely come back?
Okay, so one of the things I'm passing out is some numbers. To give you an idea, the Girl Scouts talked about their 467 hours that they've spent on the garden as well, to date. And it has been since 2014 that they've been working on this project. There's two sides to this. The first side is the monetary amount that have been expended. There's two sides to this. The first side is the monetary amount that have been, um, expended, all the dollars that we've, we've spent on this. So the first amount that you look at is the monetary donations that have been received from organizations, citizens of Trophy Club, uh, proceeds from the girls, from the, from the, um, that they've received as well. Most of the donations were made directly to the Girl Scouts and then the gift cards. So that's a total of twenty-four sixty-one. We've had in-kind donations. Most of those have been made through Keep Trophy Club Wild and volunteers in the community for a total of fourteen fifty-five. And then there was the approved contribution from the town of thirty-three fifty-five from the January, um, I forgot the exact date. I think it's the twenty-seventh, um, council meeting. So that's the total that we've had, um, contributed. Then we have expenditures. The Girl Scouts, as part of their project, they've spent a total of about two thousand eighty-nine dollars. The town expenditures have been thirty-two nineteen. Those are detailed there. Some of those are things that we can move. Some of them are things we cannot move. Uh, so we would extend, we would probably have to have greater expenditures to move it to relocate what we already have at Harmony Park and recreate it at Freedom Park. On the second page, you'll see the hours already spent by not only the Girl Scouts, but by other volunteers. So we've got a total of six hundred and sixty-one hours. We've estimated the time that the city employees have put into this. This is from a lot of different sources. Some of it's meetings, some of it's, um, time that they've spent putting in the, the granite, doing the, the planting boxes and such like that. And then the last number that I wanted to present to you is the total number of households that have already contributed and, and been involved in this project. So there are fifty-two households here in Trophy Club that have already been involved in this project. And it kind of doesn't make sense to change the whole plan for one household.
All right.
Cuz my understanding that the only person that has had any, um, controversy with regard to the placement of this park or this, this community garden is the Pals. If there's anybody else that I'm not aware of, I'd love to know about it. But are you aware of other households that have, have said that there's a problem with this?
Yeah, I, I've, I've talked to two others that have objected to it.
Okay. And Lori made a very, very valid point, that a lot of the people, I think, that have signed up to garden live on that side of Trophy Club. I mean, that's, I think that's, that's a big piece of it. The other piece of it is, you know, they're, they go there, there's shade. There's no shade at the dog park that I'm, not, not that you can see, that area. It's just, I don't understand why it seems to be such a problem, because there are cities all over the United States that have community gardens in public parks. It's completely within the scope of what you would have in a commu- in a, in a community park.
All right. Any other comments about location?
Um, I, I would ask you and urge you to, don't make us move everything, because we're gonna have to have help from the city to do that. We would have, we'd have to put that into the contract, if, if that's part of, part of the contract. But we can discuss that with regard to the contract.
All right. Great. And so does anybody have any questions for Ms. Corbin? If none, thank you very much, and we'll get back to you in just a moment.
Actually, actually, I apologize. Oh, hello?
Ms. Corbin?
Yes.
The proposal is to put hedges along the fencing. Who, who is paying for that?
Excuse me?
The hedges that are being proposed.
Who is paying for the hedges?
Um, I, it could either come from Trophy Club Wild or from this town, whatever, from, basically from the dollars that we have left over. We would probably, probably do that.
So that would be an expense that if the park was moved, that you would save?
But that's nominal. I mean, really-
Hedges?
Yeah, they, and, and we also have, we have, uh, some of the plannings and such that we, we plan to use have come as donations from master naturalists and master gardeners and other organizations that are supporting this um, outside of Trophy Club. So we may be able to get those hedges through one of those organizations as well.
Would the fact that-
And that wouldn't incur any cost to us.
Would the fact that the parking is a lot closer be any beneficial to the gardeners?
Well, it depends. I mean, one of the, the problems that Adam says, has suggested is that we may not be able to have a shed at the dog park. If we cannot have a shed at the dog park, yet we can have one at Harmony Park, that's problematic as well. So that's something we'll have to, to talk about. That I think that's contractual.
Adam, if you could address that?
That would require, I believe, some type of waiver for us to put a shed at the park, I believe. I, I just didn't know if that would fly, so I told them I wasn't sure if we could actually install a shed at the park. I mean, from a space issue, there's not, there's not an issue. And what I'd suggested to them is if you, if you did something, perhaps it could be more like a storage unit. The only thing I threw out as a suggestion is if you go to like Indy Four, we've got some lower storage units that are pretty good size, but they're not as tall as a shed.
So why can we put one in Harmony Park and not one in Freedom Park?
Well, we've had, we, we had one from soccer from a long time ago. I don't know. Was the answer was-
I assume it was a waiver, then?
Well, I don't remember a waiver being given for that, but I, I just knew that, I just knew that that wasn't something I could tell them at that point. They could just do that. I wasn't sure.
I'm not a big fan of sheds, period. They're not, they're not even allowed by code supposedly. I mean, I know people have them, but, um, you know, I do care about the way our parks look and the way the aesthetics are. And regardless if it's a shed in Harmony Park or a shed in Freedom Park, I care what it looks like. And it, and, and you have lots of people who go there. You have lots of people, that's the way it's reflected when you have visitors coming in there. And, you know, I would want that to look a very particular way. And I'd want council to know exactly where that placement is and what it's going to look like and the function of it.
So the shed at Harmony Park hasn't been approved? That's in the contract subject to approval?
It's not in, it's not in the contract.
No, it's, 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 there's a small shed against the soccer shed. There's already a shed at Harmony Park. There's been one for, uh, ten years. So it's against the, it's placed directly against, near the parking lot, against the soccer shed. It's a small little shed right against the soccer shed.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, uh, Ms. Corbin? All right, thank you, ma'am.
That seventy-eight hours, what does that equal to? How much money that was contributed? Uh, I didn't see, I looked at the motion, and I didn't see where we agreed to contribute seventy-eight hours of employee time. But do we have any kinda monetary value of that?
It was, it was performed during, um, regular work hours. It wasn't OT. But now, we had discussed on the site that there was, if you remember correctly, there was gonna be, uh, staff had discussed there'd be a large amount of site prep for that site. So we did some of the work on the site, and then, um, due to the time constraints that were starting to occur during that process, we helped a little at the end with some of the placements of the sheds, I believe. So the majority of it was at the beginning to actually prepare that property. And that was something that we said would be something that the town would have to do is to prep the site, um, if you remember what it looked like before. So we leveled it, prepared it, did everything like that as far as that's concerned.
Can I, can I make a comment to that?
If you come to the microphone, you can. Matt wanna sit on the front row.
All right. Um, the seventy-eight hours also includes times that we've met with both Patricia and with Adam. Um, we've had several meetings in negotiation, negotiating the contract. There were some other meetings prior to that, prior to the June meeting, where we met with Adam and I believe Tony. So that seventy-eight hours includes all of that time that, and I just included, um, hours of city employees. And Phillip, you were at one of the meetings, and I didn't include your time, because you're not a town employee.
Yeah, I, I get paid, uh, quite a bit.
Yeah, that reflects your pay rate as well.
Well, I can amend it if you like.
Well, I would still say seventy-eight. What, so do we have any kind of estimation of how much we've spent on, on town employees for this project?
No, we didn't break it down for the cost that was already included in their salary.
Cuz again, I, I don't see where in the motion we made any, we agreed to pay so much, but I don't remember directing staff to, you know, do a lot of this work. There was a lot of work that you did that, in the breakdown that they had, and if you go back and look at their presentation, that we weren't responsible for, but we did.
There were things, there were things we became engaged in with the nature of that project was, that wasn't necessarily planned on. Uh, absolutely, there was a couple items the staff had to deal with. Um, it was, you know, it was problematic, but there were a couple, there were a couple issues staff dealt with. Uh, like I said, we restricted our time, but there was some time given to the project.
So I guess what, sort of what I'm getting at is, I would like to know, because I think we're gonna need to put a number, you know, whether we participate or we don't participate in the move or in the site prep or things like that. We're gonna need to know exactly what the cost is gonna be involved. I know that you're gonna have to have cost involved as far as putting water, you know, somewhere at that location. I know you have water there, but you're gonna have to run, you know, uh, a spigot, things like that. But I'd also like to know exactly how much we're talking that we're gonna have to contribute or we're gonna have to provide in staff time and, and in money to, to make this move. And, and I will say this, and I don't know, you know, I have no idea what people have contributed for these plots, if there's any money that's been made, but you're talking that you can triple the size. So there's gonna be additional money coming in from people if they expand it. You know, there's gonna be additional money coming in, so I think we need to factor that in as well. I don't think that we should bear all of the, the burden to move this, you know, uh, on ourselves.
Was there more demand for space in the garden than we had?
There is a waiting list, yes.
Yes. Okay, there was a waiting list. So there's a waiting list, and you're saying this new one would have three times the amount of space for... So there, there literally wouldn't be a waiting list at the new location?
No, no, there probably wouldn't be. The biggest piece is moving it, and we will lose some of the, Mr.-
I understand.
All right, Counsel, I, uh, I'm gonna move an amendment to the motion, and if I receive a second, I'd like to speak to it. I move that we amend the motion that after the, uh, the words "dog park," which we're at the end, that we add, and we authorize the town in its park and recreation budget to spend up to twenty-five hundred dollars of supplies and related expenses, not including labor, to facilitate the move. If I receive a second, I'll talk to it.
I'll second it.
I don't know whether the motion to move the location is gonna pass or not. But if it does pass, I think we're making that decision, not the residents who contributed their money and their labor. And although we put money in it, in the sense of labor and maybe expenses of, I don't know, did we buy the crushed granite or whatever? But, but, but it seems only reasonable to me that we somehow facilitate that move. So that's the reason I made the motion. I don't know the amount. I realize we could bring that back and, and talk in detail about the amount, but I don't need to know that tonight to pick a location, I mean personally. So that's my comments. So comments relative to the amendment?
I have, I have one. Um, you mentioned that you felt like maybe we should help facilitate the move. I keep coming back to where we left this, the, the only, the, the first time we dealt with it, which was we had, I believe, a unanimous council vote in favor of something that had conditions on it. And then what, what ended up coming back to us was a project that had started without those conditions being met. So, um, and, and honestly, there's a lot of folks that can be sort of cited as having contributed to that. I don't think that the Girl Scouts are part of that, but all the adults that were involved had a chance to get it right the first time and didn't. So if we have to make a decision here that ultimately saves this thing, that maybe is, um, uncomfortable or inconvenient or costs money from someone somewhere down the road, my reaction would be to look at it as at least the project continues in some form. Because right now, I'm not even sure I'm in favor of having it continue at all. If, if, if all we had had was Mr. and Mrs. Powell's objection and, and then the other, the other things we heard from the other residents, perhaps that could have been addressed had the internals of the operations of this, um, project been working as stipulated from the time we initially approved it. But by the time Mr. Powell made it here, his issue wasn't even our main issue. Our main issue was we had two factions of people fighting over how the garden was gonna be run. Which gets back to why these types of things are difficult. And the question was posed, why can't we do it if other towns are doing it? Ask yourselves that question, because I don't, it, it's your responsibility. So with that being said, I'm up in the air. I hear the arguments pro-Harmony Park and, and I, I agree with what some of you girls have said about keeping it there. And it's, but if we need to, but if the, the optimal solution for the community is the other location at Freedom Park, then, um, I'm leaning there, but I have a hard time facilitating that move since I feel like we set the table initially and through no fault, through no fault here, did it, did it, did it, and did we end up where we are, I guess, is what I'm saying.
All right, so I had Councilmember Lamont who wanted to talk, and then Councilmember Perro.
And we still have Veronica and Susan who'd like to speak.
So did you have more speakers? I'm not getting that. I wonder if I lost my internet connection. Okay. All right, so who wanted to speak? And it, well, let me back up. If you speak, it would be on the amendment at this time. So the amendment is saying, put twenty-five hundred dollars worth of money into the project if it moves. If you're not speaking about that, you can't speak yet. You need to speak about that, anybody? Not yet, sorry. We'll get back to the main motion, but sorry. So if, is it about the amendment? It's about whether or not to include twenty-five hundred dollars in the move? All right, so I don't believe there is. All right, so Jim?
I just wanted to say, while I certainly appreciate what, uh, Councilmember Rowe just said about the problems and issues, back in January, uh, we had agreed as a, as a body that this whole discussion and the direction of going forward with this project would be in Harmony Park. And had at that time this alternate site been brought to our attention and raised as a potential alternate site and considered as an alternate site, and we didn't, uh, encourage the Girl Scouts and the adults with Keep Trophy Club Wild to, to start working and expending funds, uh, about, uh, five thousand dollars, where it looks like at this point, for the Harmony Park site. Uh, I would, I would agree with Councilmember Rowe, but, uh, in this case, I think, since we led them in that direction to take time and money and develop harmony, if we do choose to move it to an alternate site, which has just come to the table, uh, in my mind, I think we would have an obligation to, to step up to the plate and assist in undoing what was done. Because it appears to me, based on what's been presented, that we've got the contract issues sorted out, the plans have been sorted out, that they've finally stepped up, even though it took eight months to get there, to making, uh, the garden what it's supposed to be. It's just a question of where now, and I think if we move it at this late date, we have to, in my mind, play a role in, in moving it to that new site, which just came up for discussion.
All right. So do you need to speak about the amendment, anybody? Garrett, and then Phillip?
Yeah.
All right.
I wanna say something about what Phillip, I just heard Phillip.
Jim, I disagree with your statement. When the group came before us last time, we said, "Don't do any more work until you brought it back." Wasn't that the case? Stop, stop all work. So since the last time we talked to them, there should have been no progress whatsoever on the Harmony Park location. And any work done, y'all have made progress on it? Okay, so I get, I agree.
That was all initial.
Right, prior to us approving. Right. And, and my, my point is this. At, at, at no fault of y'alls, this should have been brought before us prior to things starting. I blame this internally. This is a problem we have inside. And I talked about this last time. I'm not gonna beat a dead horse. It's a mess that we gotta sort out now, but my, my point is, if the movement forward, well, may, maybe I understand your point. You're saying we allowed, town allowed them to move forward. Okay. I, I understand your point now.
Counselmember Schaffner?
Sorry, I thought you were saying that we had.
No, the town.
Gotcha.
I, I, actually, I do disagree, because I think we were very specific in our motion. Uh, and I keep going back to the motion. We wanted a contract in place with KC, KTCW. That didn't happen. We wanted a, uh, lock on a gate. That didn't happen. We wanted a lock on a water source. That didn't happen. Uh, we wanted hours of operation. We never got that. So I, everything that we asked for, no matter whose fault it was, whether it's internal, whether it's KTCW, it didn't happen. So I, I do disagree that we bear the responsibility of funding. What I would like to do, would like to know on the amendment-
What I would like to do, would like to know on the amendment is what that includes. Twenty-five hundred, um, can go pretty fast, so I guess what I need to know and understand is what do you, Mayor, consider in that twenty-five hundred?
I, I didn't consider any specific item. I just grabbed a ma- an amount just to put a limit on it, so they couldn't spend more than that. And ultimately, if it passes, we'll vote, if the amendment passes, we would vote on the location. So if the location is approved, if the change of location is approved, at least there's some money appropriated from the town for that, and I recognize that, um, for, for me, and I agree with Councilmember Perro, I bear the blood of some of that responsibility, uh, in the sense that I'm the council, and the staff reports to the council through the town manager, and things didn't happen the way they should have. Ultimately, I wish it had turned out significantly different. But, um, I, I feel bad if I say move it, and I'm not willing to help participate financially. Now, maybe they'll raise the money to do that, but in one sense, I feel like it penalizes them. So that's the reason I made that amendment, so...
So does this include man-hours?
No, I said only material.
So it's twenty-five hundred material?
Material only.
And unlimited man-hours, or?
I didn't make any motion about man-hours.
I have a, I have a quick thought to build on what you just said, Nick, and, and what, and what Jim said as well, is I think that, um, I would, I think I would agree with what you guys were saying if I was running a business. But we're talking about committing taxpayer dollars. We're not talking about committing dollars that we committed to a, to a customer or a project, or something that we made a commitment to. We're talking about taxpayer resources. So the question is, given the other issues that we have seen up to this point with this project, is this throwing good money after bad? And that is why I'm hesitant to commit any additional town resources up, uh, to this, from this point forward.
All right, um, Councilmember Lamont, and then me.
I guess I could live with the twenty-five hundred dollars in manpower, but I think hard cash, giving them hard cash, I, maybe I have, I have an issue with that one, but manpower...
I wasn't saying giving them cash, but i- if we're gonna do the exposed granite, and I don't know who bought the exposed granite, but I'm just saying, let's buy the exposed granite. If, uh, there's some materials that we can contribute, that's what I'm talking about, not labor. And I'm not just saying anything they want to. Obviously, it's gotta be something that's appropriate for that location. So I didn't put that in my motion, but that's what I'm assuming happens.
We bought the decomposed granite according to the sheet.
Yeah, okay. So, um, I ask for the chair after Councilmember Lamont. I move the previous question on the amendment only. Do you have a second?
You already had a second, right?
Second.
Oh, Jim did, I'm sorry, okay. So I'm moving the previous question only on the amendment, so we'll close debate on the amendment. Your voting, do you wanna close debate and move to the main motion? I haven't closed debate on that. So it's either gonna amend or not amend the main motion. All in favor of the amendment, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Motion fails with Sanders and Perro voting for. Okay. So we're back to the main motion, and that was, uh, to move that the location be selected as the alternate site at Freedom Dog Park, and that was the end of it. So it's merely a motion to move the location. Any discussion about that? All right, so Mr. Powell, you wanted to speak earlier, and I'm sure it's about this, but I do have a question for you, and I get Veronica, that, your comments may be valid to that also. So do you wanna ask Mr. Powell a question?
Well, they're both planning on speaking. They can speak first, and if I still have the question for you, I'll ask it.
All right, so actually, I had a third person sign up to speak, so Mr. Powell, come ahead and speak, and then Veronica, and then Susan.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. Uh, I just wanna make a couple of comments about the previous comments that were made, uh, about keeping it where it is, okay? There was a lot of talk about the dollars that were spent, man-hours that are spent, these things that are done, right? And there was also conversation about people having to drive somewhere to get to the location, and it could be different if we move it to the dog park. That, to me, is not even a part of the conversation. We drive every day to get whatever we want, right? So I, that's a big important part of it, but there is a piece of it that is important to me. And that is that there was a brief discussion about the hedges and the shrubs that were gonna go around this park. Now, I have always talked, everybody that I talked to on this, I have said, "We need complete privacy." And what I specifically asked for was Nellie Stevens' holly bushes that were six to eight feet high. Now, I don't think that's a surprise to anybody tonight, at least those of you that I've talked to, and, but what I hear from Keep Trophy Club Wild is that, "Oh, we'll put the little shrubs and little bushes in there." That does not provide us any privacy, not at all. So I think that's something we need to take into consideration.
This, this might be off-topic a bit, but if, if that wasn't there, do you have privacy?
No.
You don't, right?
Right now, I have no pr-
So I mean, it's an open park.
Yes.
So somebody can go up and play ball right behind your fence if they want to?
They could, yeah.
I just wanna, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding.
Yeah.
I understand what you're asking for, and I would be asking for the same thing, but you, you are outside a park, like I'm outside a golf course, but a guy wants to hit his balls right next to my fence, he can do whatever he wants.
You know, I understand that, and people walk around to walk away around there, and kids come over and play balls, get thrown over there.
Okay.
That I'm, I have no problem with that whatsoever.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Do you wanna ask him a question?
My question was answered.
All right, thank you. Veronica, I think you signed up to speak. We're back to the main motion, not amended, and that's to move the location. So you're speaking for or against the moving of the location?
Sure. Veronica Ruin School, One Green Hill Trail. And I heard all the discussion today, and we talked about these girls, I want to first mention about this Girl Scout project. We started this about twelve months ago. We gave this project to the Girl Scout, and we, the towns also assigned us that plot, which is located at Harmony Park, to create a community garden for the community. And they did fundraising for this project. And if we say today, we're gonna scrap that project, start with a new one, I don't believe Girl Scout can go there, sell another project, say, "We're gonna work on another community garden. Could you give us money to work on this?" So I don't think this is the best management practice for the Girl Scout, since they've already done their work, and then you're saying, "We scrub and, we change our mind, and then we're gonna start with the new places." And this is the point I want you to consider about this. Another thing is, these three Girl Scouts spend energies, and the plus their parents and the volunteers work on this project, try to get it accomplished. We have our mindset to get this done. The failure, it's not really upon us. And we have the goal set up to go for it, and we cannot just say, "You have done this, and we don't like this place. We're gonna start with a new one, and we're gonna spend more money," which is tax dollars, taxpayers' dollars, "and the other volunteers' hours to work on it." That plot is a lot smaller than Freedom Dog Park, but when you start with a new community garden, you always start with a small, because you don't know what's the potential, what's the risk you're gonna get into. Not every gardener signed up for it right now. They're gonna stay there forever. So this is our learning experience to start with a small, and then we can expand it to the future site if we needed to. And we don't want to start with a new big plot there, and we cannot manage that. That's take a lot of manpower to manage the community garden. Uh, one thing is about the, uh, Freedom Dog Park, and we got to have a tool shed. That's one of the elements the community garden need to have, to store the tools, all the amendments, any kind of information, seeds, all the other, this is the place gardener try to get their information, posting all the information inside, uh, inside the tool shed. So we need to have a decent size. Plus, the tool shed is also serve us, uh, the structure for the rain barrels. And the current, uh, structure at the Harmony Park, the soccer shed, and we use that, we attach the tool shed next to it. So if we paint, if you allow to have that tool shed at Harmony Park, and we just attach a small one to it, we paint it to the same color, you barely can see, that's a different structure. But we can use the str- existing structure to capture the rainwater for the gardener to use. And the other thing you haven't considered, if it's the compost bin is gonna be allowed in the dog park. And if, we designed the compost bin at Freedom Dog Park, which we use real nice cedar woods to blend in with the box. And we also plan to put these structures around it, and the shrubs around it, like screening for that, the compost bin. So since compost bin, there's no smell, and there's no visual, influence to that. I don't think there's much com- complaint about to have those elements. And my next, uh, point is, one thing is, because we have done so much work, and we just want to say, "Well, right now, we have other options. We just move it." I really like to put a consideration into it, why we made the decision in the first place, why we cannot just only stay there, or stay with what our decision has been made, instead of changing decision at this late course. Thank you.
All right, and then I have Susan Edstrom.
Sorry, I didn't know this was on the agenda and what you guys were talking about till I was sitting in the audience. So I'm looking at this map, and I'll be the first to admit I'm map-challenged, okay? Help me understand. I'm, I'm looking at what's in the packet, okay? I see a little hexagon shape with a little, um, pin that says possible garden location. Where's the small dog park in, in this, Adam?
It's outside of it. It's to the, it's to the right, which would be the east.
I just told you I'm map-challenged.
That's the training area in the middle.
It's the training area itself.
So you're gonna eliminate the training area, so where, so where does this, where does the small dog park end?
The small dog park is, um, okay, so the small dog park is all, goes all the way down here, this giant piece right here.
All right, none of this, no, okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So a couple of thoughts again. I apologize, didn't know this was on the agenda, and I feel for you guys making this decision. I'm glad you're up there and I'm not. Couple of things I wanna make sure you've considered. We have had two parvo incidents at the pool, at the dog park, which requires bleach for resolution. Has, has anybody considered or thought about the amount of bleach that might be used in proximity to a community garden, should there be another par- parvo incident? Just throwing it out there, just making sure that somebody has thought about that? You treat that, and there's chlorine bleach out there, and there's a rain event afterwards. Also, if the dog park isn't cleaned as it should be, which we all know it's not, um, it's a complaint that we get all of the time. I know staff cleans it once a week. You have all of that with a rain event seeping into your community garden. Just saying. I also think that Tim's point is to the location, what was, what cart came before the horse, and what was there first, and what was there second. Six-foot shrubs aren't gonna happen overnight, just like gardening in the median isn't gonna happen overnight, but if shrubs are planted, over time, those shrubs will get to be as tall as you would like them to be if you don't cut them down. My only concern is, my, my concern is at the dog park, again, you're creating all of this activity, where you have dogs, where we know we have people that don't follow the rules. We know that they're unleashed, going to and from the cars, people with their arms full of gardening equipment, compost, whatever. Just wanna make sure we're really thinking about that, that that's the right location. And some of the things that could be really negative about it, from the standpoint of safety, potential health risks, putting that right in the middle of two very large dog parks that are, are very well-used, so... Those are my only thoughts. I didn't hear anything regarding that, so just wanted to make sure you guys were thinking about that.
Thank you, Susan. All right, um, let me make sure I don't have any other... I'm sorry?
Can I make one more comment, please?
Uh, is it in reference to the location?
Yes.
All right, one more, and, uh, were you awes- you provided us the financial figures, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I just wanted to give you credit for that. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
A lot of the detail I would have loved to have had before now, so I appreciate it.
It didn't occur to us until we got the news that we were looking at moving the dog park, or moving to Freedom Park, the, the, the community garden. The other piece that I'd like to say is, before you decide to move this tonight, you need to understand that we have only been given four days heads-up that this was even an option. So as gardeners, we haven't had a chance to even consider it. Two of our people have been out to look at it. We've noted the problems that we, we thought that we saw immediately, but I have to say, thank you so much, Susan, because there are some things that we had not considered. And her comments are very valid, now that I, now that I've heard them. So I would, rather than you make the decision to move it or not move it, I would prefer for you to table it. And give us some time to consider what's realistic and what's not, and, and if we've got health and safety issues, those are things that need to be, we need to be able to look at as well, 'cause we've only had four days to even consider this.
Thank you. Larue, what's, when is the time you need to start planning again for fall?
Um, now.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, um, so counsel, we have the main motion, or the original motion before us, and that is to move the location to the alternate site, which is at Freedom Dog Park. Any other discussion that is needed? Ryland?
I have one comment to make, um, and I've kind of hinted at this earlier, which is that I'm, I'm not convinced that we need to move forward with this project at all. My concerns are concerns that are always expressed when you have something like this that is run by volunteers, which is, what's the, what's the structure around it? How long is it going to, how long is the enthusiasm that, that birthed the idea gonna be sustained, and, and, and basically, how long will this be a successful project? If we have a community garden, it will, one day it will go away. It won't be there forever. Will it be twenty years? Will it be thirty years? You think it's gonna be there forever? That's, that's an impossibility. My point is, how can, I'm, so I'm thinking, how can, if we have one, how can I make sure that it has the best chance to succeed for the longest period of time? My belief, a smaller site is a better one for that reason. I'm not convinced that we need to have one, but if we're gonna have one, we need to go smaller over bigger. And so I would support, in this case, not moving it for that reason.
I would like to make a motion to refer this item to staff to report back with more details about the alternate location, including cost and materials and, of, materials and labor to help move it, or that they might recover from moving. And with the consideration of any type of grading necessary to stop any, uh, contamination by bleach runoff into that area. If I receive a second, I'll talk to it. All right, motion to refer dies for lack of a second. We're back to the main motion.
I guess I got a question for Adam. If it's dangerous to plant tomatoes there, how do we allow a toddler park?
Well, this is from a staff perspective. I did look at the parvo issue. The only things we bleach are the, um, dog toys, or spot bleach where there's fecal matter that remains on the ground. We don't bleach the dog park. And actually, the dog park, the flow of that park runs toward the creek. The do- the, the garden is at the front of the dog park, so the flow actually moves away. If you look at the topo out there, your flow is heading down, not forward. So there's not a mass bleaching of the dog park at all. In fact, pretty much, we just do this perfunctory. If you remember, if council members before, we'd shut the dog park down for, and at length of time excessively, what we really learned is parvo's in the ground. It's at Harmony Park, it's at whatever, where there's dogs, you're gonna have parvo in the ground. So it isn't like you have a huge containment issues. We spot bleach where we see fecal matter. Where fecal matter's been picked up, i- i- it's gone. There's nothing there, so I, I, I don't, I'd had looked at that. I, I don't see any type of safety issue between, unless you, you can't bleach something within, you know, thirty or forty feet of a, of a garden, and I, I don't see that being an issue from a safety standpoint, or an organic standpoint.
And, and can I say also, I think it's incumbent upon KTCW to keep it as small as they wanna keep it. If we have a contract with them, they don't have to develop ten thousand square feet of the dog park. They can do a, a hundred square feet, for all I'm concerned.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm advocating putting in backstops where I can. I'm, I'm comfortable, that's why I'm comfortable with a smaller side if we have to have one.
All right, so Garrett, you wanna talk?
I wanna say one thing before we vote. I don't know if anybody else has anything to say, but I wanna speak to the girls again. I'll just tell you guys that the three of you, all the other adults already know this stuff. Y'all have got a greater life lesson than anybody y'all's age would. Um, y'all have gotten to see firsthand, and I- Y'all have gotten to see firsthand, and I hope you wind up being libertarians and hate the government like I do. Usually, government never equals good. But, um, I, I applaud you for all the work you've done. I'm really proud of y'all. I can't tell you. I know the effort. I've got a son that's about y'alls age and, and kudos. I know it's not just, you know, an easy thing to do. So regardless of the way that the vote comes out tonight, and regardless of the direction we went in, I, I congratulate y'all for everything you did. And thank you, you make Trophy Club a better place to be. Unfortunately, y'all have to deal with adults, so, um, here, here you go. You're gonna deal with us, so.
All right. If there's no more discussion, I will call for the vote. The motion is to move the location to the alternate site of Freedom Dog Park for the location of the community garden. All in favor of the move, show your locate, your hands. All opposed, same sign. So there are four opposed, three for, for the motion to move fails. The people voting for were Schaffner, Lamont, and Sanders. All right, so we're back to the main motion, which the location has now been sobbed. So much for you getting home to do homework.
Yeah. That's another reason to not like government, right Garrett?
So I apologize. If you needed to go do homework, please do. We are back to the motion, or the, the main item, which there is no motion on the floor, and that's the consideration of the contract. Now for me, when I read the comments from Keep Trophy Club Wild. There were a lot of really good comments in there that I don't feel were addressed. And maybe they didn't have time to address them because they didn't see the contract. I don't know. But, but there seemed to be a lot of good ones there. I did not have time to go examine the contract and see where I wanted to consider those suggestions or not. So that's kind of where I am. I don't know, somebody may have done more research on that. So anybody have an item about the contract or the main item before us, which is item 12?
I've got a couple of things in the contract, but let me just address the very first thing that I think is absent from this contract. Um, this is a contract with KTCW and the city, correct? So it's the guidelines that they're gonna follow. Sorry, town, sorry. We're a town, not city. Learn something new every night. One of the first things I think we need to have in here is. We do need to, I think it's kind of what we talked about before, is to provide some sort of a, a screen. And I think that if, if I'm gonna get behind this and support it, I think that was kind of one of the, I think, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong. I think that was one of the things that we had mentioned before. And in light of the fact that we've missed a lot of stuff on this, I'd like that to be in there with a specific height designation and size of those shrubs. And if we say it's a six foot shrub from the ground to the air, if it's a five foot or a three foot or two foot or one foot, whatever it is, I'd like to understand better what that looks like. And I would like to see that be one of the things that goes in before any more construction goes in. That's just something I'd like to see added to this contract. I don't think it's addressed. I haven't seen it addressed. I've got a bunch of other issues. Not a bunch, I've got a few other issues, but I'll address those. But I think that for, first and foremost, is one of my.
Who's, uh, who's drawing is 218? Is that our drawing or their drawing?
It's 218, the plot layout?
Yes.
That is theirs.
Okay. What page are you on?
Page 218.
And are all of these plots accounted for in this map?
Are all the plots utilized? Is that what you're saying? Does anybody know?
Are all the plots taken?
Yes.
Yes, there is a, there is a waiting list.
All right. The answer was yes for the microphone in case it didn't pick it up.
So is there, in your opinion, is there any way to compress that even more? I, I would, I would like to give more of a buffer than that.
Yeah, my question about 218, I'm thinking the same thing you are, Philip, is, I wish we had it on the system here so everyone could know what I'm talking about. Um, but there's no compass rows on this diagram, so I'm not sure if I'm talking north. I think I'm talking south and west.
Mr. Powell lives at the top.
He, he lives at the top?
Right.
So my recommendation would be to eliminate those five planting beds and pull that in another six to eight feet in addition to the 10 feet he's already got.
Which, which planting beds?
There's, there's, there's five on either edge, so if you just pulled a row out.
There are five next to the shrubs at the top of the picture, I think is what you're referring to.
Right.
One, kind of going across, two, two on the side going across, the other going up and down.
Well, if that's south, I think Mr. Powell's on the west.
He's up top.
You're up top, okay.
Cause I, I'd also like to, um, eliminate the compost from the site. So that would, that would give, you could probably put two spaces there if you. Cause I agree with you, I don't know how much space that would give, but as much as we can possibly move that up. I'd like to work in that direction.
If this drawing is. Roughly accurate, it would probably at least be a, an additional eight, six to eight feet. On top of 10 that's already there, and that's pretty substantial.
Yeah, I agree.
Is there any restriction on that compost having to be rectangular? Could it be moved to the, to the backside of the, uh, pollinator? And maybe changed in shape or design so you can get that extra space for the boxes?
We could, we could, the compost bins can be, you know, anything we want them to be. And I know that one of the comments.
Thank you, Ms. Larue.
So the compost bins can be pretty much anything we want them to be. There's a lot of different ways to do that. There's, um, some that are plastic that we can, we can actually purchase if we decided to do that, whatever. But I know that there was a comment about the smell from the compost bins, but honestly, I don't know how, does anybody up here compost?
Somebody in the audience only.
All right, so if you compost, I've, I've composted, I'm not currently doing it, but we have. It doesn't smell. I know you, you are worried about the, that it smells and, and the whole concept of things rotting. But it, it doesn't smell unless there's a problem. And there's a couple of things that cause those problems. And you walk up there, if you smell it, we can immediately take care of it. It's, it's, it's a simple fix. But ideally, it won't, it won't smell. I know that that's one of the issues that has been raised. But we can move the compost bins. The reason for having them is so that there is gonna be garden debris. There's people deadhead their flower, the flowers, the, whatever it is they're planting, there's garden debris. And rather than having to cart it off, having that composting bin there is a place for them to dispose of it. It also is ecological. I mean, it's, comes back down to, to being green. And, and there aren't many green activities that I think we do in the Towne and Trophy Club, and so this, we hope would be a start to that. So, um, I, I don't know, that's, that's the reason for doing that. But we can do the compost bins. I mean, nothing is set in stone. I mean, we can move, move the garden over further. One of the things I'd like to comment too is. From my understanding, or the way I remember it, there is like a berm or hill at the back of, of Mr. Powell's property. So there, I think we've already moved it like six feet from where it was originally proposed. And so we could move it again, but again, it's, it's more materials and everything that we would, and, but that's much easier than having to move it.
Move it across town, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, we, we're willing to do some things like that, and we've got some funds that we can, we can do that within our, our coffers. That we've, we've kind of earmarked for doing some other things. And, and the money that we get from the, the people that are renting will go directly back into the, the park as well. We can use those funds for, for making improvements and movement and stuff like that as well.
All right, if we're gonna move this forward, uh, someone needs to make a motion to approve the contract with changes, if you want any changes. And if you move the adoption of the contract only, then the floor would be open to, um, make amendments to it. And we can vote on each amendment separately if you want to. I recognize some people might want to talk, uh, but what I'm sensing at this point is we need to move forward to the next step. So anybody wish to make a motion?
Now, are we gonna have a chance to go through sections of this and, like I did about the music and so on, there was some other?
Depends what the motion is, but yes, if it's a, it's a motion to approve the contract, then yes, that could happen.
Okay. Well, then in that case, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the contract after discussion on amendments has taken place.
You can't do that. You either move to, to accept it or not, and then the floor is open again. You, you can't say anything about amendments, but just move it, and then the floor's open. If somebody wishes to amend or have discussion, they can do so.
Okay, I'll make a motion then.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with the following stipulations. Uh, one being that the amount of buffer between the garden and Mr. Powell's property is increased by an additional eight feet. Two being, uh, that the section on organic methods be removed. And three being. And final, third and final, being that the section, let me see if I can find it real quick. A section about, um, minors unaccompanied by a guardian be changed to have a minimum age of 12 instead of 16.
Mr. Chairman, how does that affect, there's another document in here about the rules, uh, that I'd like to discuss. Now, how does that affect if we open up the contract for debate and discussion?
Yeah, I should have specified that when I made my motion, that the rules would be changed.
What that means is everything is still open other than he's made a motion to amend. If it gets a second, then we'll deal with tho- that amendment. And if it's amended, then we'll be back to the main motion as amended, and you'll be able to talk about anything.
Yeah, I, I actually, I really, I should have worded my motion better because those are items that have to do with their, the rules and, and not, are not actually text in the contract.
And one other thing, what if we make it so stringent that they don't want to do this?
Then they back out.
They back out, they don't sign the contract and just, just want to make sure.
All right, so I'm not sure, so we have a motion, do I have a second? That you're, so the rules are not part of the contract?
Yes, 2.02.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but they're not like, they're not fully listed out.
Well, it's a separate document, I just wanted to make sure.
So we could open it up.
Yeah.
It was still referenced in the contract.
Listed as exhibit, okay, all right. So we have a motion to approve the contract with the following stipulations. Increase the buffer by eight, to eight feet.
By, by eight feet.
By eight feet. Uh, the section on organic method be removed, and that the section about minors being accompanied by guardian change the age to be 12.
Correct.
All right. So that's the amendment. Yes?
If I want to add something to this, is it, do I amend the motion right now or do we wait for discussion? How do you want to handle that?
Actually, you're right. The motion included changes. So the entire matter is before you, you can make an amendment to change anything. Including what he said.
Now or before we vote?
Well, did I get a second? I don't know, did I get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All right. All right, so the motion that was made is to approve the contract with the items that list those three things being changed. So that's what's before us, is the entire matter of the contract, which includes other sections, Jim. Other sections could be amended. Garrett, if you want to amend something else, you can amend it.
Just want to get a clarification on the buffer, because this illustration shows a, a gray area with a four foot buffer. Then it shows hedges inside of a six foot buffer. And so we're gonna take the four plus six and add eight more to that.
Correct. That was the intent as I interpreted.
It's gonna be 18 feet total. Basically 12 and then six for the hedge. Thereabouts, or whatever.
Garrett, did you?
One, one thing I'd like to add to the contract, um, and I'm not sure what procedural, how I say this, but Mr. Mayor, I want to add this to the contract. I don't know if that's an amendment or whatnot.
And?
I would like to have a clause in this contract, and I don't know what we want to call it. We can call it the accountability clause, or we can call it the Councilman Reed Bulldozer Clause, whatever we want to call it. But that is simply that we have Keep Trophy Club Wild and Troop, what are you guys? 3909, thank you. Troop 3909, come back in 12 month period of time, once this contract, and report as to what's going on. I want to make sure that the girls are staying involved in this. One of the reasons why I'm behind this is because these girls are involved in this. And so I'd like to see progress. I'd like to, if we're gonna put tax dollars into this, I'd like to see how this goes. And I know there may be some new girls, there may be a different troop or whatnot.
So just a second, so just a second. Just a second. Yeah, I'll, I'll get to you. So, uh, motion, Councilmember Reed, move that we amend the contract to have a clause that it requires Keep Trophy Club Wild and Troop 3909 to come back. In how long?
12 months.
Every 12 months.
Okay. Okay, so now is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second that.
All right, so Perro seconds.
And the discussion is simply what this gives us is this gives us that out. If it's not maintained, if there's problems, if the rules aren't adhered to, if we've gotten feedback from the community. If something's gone wrong in 12 months, we have the ability to say, it was fun while it lasted.
Yeah, but what, I don't understand bringing the troop back. I can understand KTCW, cause that's who the contracts with. I don't, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with making the troop come back each time.
Are they no longer gonna have any involvement in this?
We don't have a contract for them.
So y'all are done after tonight? So y'all, y'all got y'all's badge, y'all are good. Move on to bigger and better things.
Yeah, and we don't have a contract with them, we have a contract.
I understand that, but.
All right, so we have a motion to amend that included a clause requiring KT, KC, TW, and the troop to come back after, every 12 months.
So the Girl Scouts are the cover. Y'all learned another thing tonight.
Yep.
No, 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 like, I, I, I've got it, I understand. Um, I would have liked at least, if it's not the Girl Scout troop as well, I'd like Keep Trophy Club Wild to come back and report to us.
All right, so, Mr. Perro, would you agree to strike?
I agree, strike the Girl Scout portion.
The Girl Scouts, but leave 12 months.
That's already in the contract.
Oh, it already is in the contract?
10.02, there's a required update no later than March 30th of each year. But it, it just says attend, an officer of KTCW board shall attend a council meeting and shall provide an update to the council no later than March 30th of each year. So you have that, it's not real specific, but it does say there's an update.
Councilmember Reed, do you wish to withdraw your amendment?
No, I.
If you'd like that to be more specific, that's the place to do it.
What I don't want, here, here's, here's the nature of what I'm, what I'm getting at, is I don't want it to be an evergreen clause, where it just lives forever. I want us to be able, there to be a checks and balance system. If there's negative feedback, if the community doesn't like it, if it's not working. Patricia, you think that covers us that way?
We have a termination.
6.02.
We have a termination without cause, where you can terminate it without cause with 60 days prior written notice. So you have that covered as well. You also have a termination for cause.
Councilmember Perro, do you agree?
Yes, sir. Then, uh.
Okay, so we're back to the main motion with those changes. Anybody want to make an amendment?
I have an amendment to the rules, uh, going back to the section on page 229 of the package regarding no loud music. Uh, I'd like to just streamline that down, be, for the reasons stated earlier, uh, different people, different age groups, different music genre preferences. Uh, I'd like to restrict the use of music in that area to earbuds only, to avoid any kind of arguments or disputes that might arise over the volume or the type of music being played. And if you're wearing earbuds, you don't disturb anybody and you get to have your music for your own pleasure.
All right, so the, the amendment is in section on page 229. What's the section?
Uh, it's in the rules, I don't know if it's.
Garden rules, all right.
It's under garden rules.
Excuse me, I thought we were gonna just put this on the table for discussion and go through the contract and changes. It, but, I mean, we're, we're making some changes here, uh, to the rules and to the contract, and then we're gonna pass that and then go back again into the contract and make more changes? What, this is getting convoluted. Maybe I'm just.
I thought the rules were an exhibit in the contract.
They are, but you're.
And it's, and it's part of the contract.
Okay, so now, we're gonna go through, everything is an amendment now.
It's however you choose to get through it, yes.
Cause I have another one I wanted to ask as well.
All right, so wait a minute. I have a motion to amend the rules to restrict only earbuds. Wouldn't that really mean that you're restricting any music that's audible? I know there's some people that play their music so loud, I can hear it from your earbuds, Garrett, but.
I'm old, Nick, I can't hear that well.
I know, neither can I. But, all right, so we have a motion, do we have a second to that motion to amend?
I'll second it.
All right.
And then in section G?
Wait a minute, you, you got a motion to amend. Were you trying to extend your motion?
To include section G? Well, again, I don't, it depends. Well, again, I don't know, it depends how you want to go through it because there's another place I want to make a change and you want a separate amendment for that?
Well, if you make an amendment that includes five points, you're then going to have to get a unanimous, get a, a vote that passes five points.
Okay, let's do one at a time.
Do them one at a time, it might be faster than, because I may not want number four and then I have to remove number four and that kind of thing.
And I'd like to make an amendment to change-
Well, well, you've got an amendment on the floor.
I second it.
Page two-twenty-nine that's seconded to restrict earbud use only of music.
I have a comment. I, I understand where Jim's headed with this. Um, we have a noise ordinance in the town already. So, I feel like, feel like we're covered here. I mean, I, I don't, I don't see a need to change what they've decided to put in. It's, it's already more restrictive than what the noise ordinance in town is, so I see no need for us to go even further.
Alright.
Just the close proximity of all these little planting areas and all the different people and all the different ages, it's, it's, uh, you've got quite a mix in a small environment.
I promise not to get a plot and listen to any ice cube while I'm planting my squash. I'll put my earbuds in.
Okay. Alright, we, we have a motion to amend to, uh, change the rules to restrict to earbud use only when playing music. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the amendment, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Uh, it fails, the only four votes are Perro and Reed. Alright, so to help you, everyone.
What would help me is to have a hard time.
You have the entire matter before you with the agreement and all its schedules and exhibits. And you can make a motion to amend and include twenty things if you choose to do so, or one thing if you choose to do so. And each one of those we will have to deal with if you want to do it.
And wouldn't those motions actually be motions to amend of my original motion that's on the floor?
That is correct. So unless they strike one of your changes, your changes are still included in the original motion. Alright.
So I make a motion, or I amend, I make an amendment to the motion that we remove the compost. I had a problem with the compost, if y'all remember from the very beginning, I don't want compost here whether it smells or not. Gardeners can take their clippings and whatnot with them, that's not asking too much.
Alright, do I have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Alright, Lamont second, any discussion?
So, that's in your motion already, right? No difference?
Nope.
What section is yours motion, the organic matter?
Yes, that was-
Two-twenty-one, okay.
That's the methods.
Okay, all in favor of the motion to amend to remove compost as an allowable item, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Uh, the motion passes with Ro, Sanders and Lamont voting against. Is that right?
Ro, Sanders and Perro.
Oh, Ro, Sanders and Perro. Uh, so, uh, so it passed, right?
Yes.
Okay, trying to make sure we get this right. Holly, you clear with me? Okay, so we're back to the main motion as stated to begin with.
I'd like to make a motion-
Alright.
On section G, other provisions, changes in the rules, for the sake of the members who'll be using these rules. Uh, section G states that KTCW may amend these rules in its discretion without advance notice. And, uh, the gardeners through the garden administrator may propose additional rules and rule modifications for KTCW's consideration. If I understand the contract that they have with the town, they cannot do this on their own. Uh, or unless I misunderstood the, uh, the contract, that they may amend the rules with council concurrence. If I understand the contract correctly.
So-
And therefore, council, uh, may amend the rules in its discretion without advance notice with council concurrence. And also now toward the bottom, uh, the administrator may propose additional rules, modifications for consideration with council concurrence.
So give me the page number, the paragraph and what word you're going to change.
Section G, changes in the rules. And in the first sentence, I would just add a comma and add the words with council concurrence. And in the last sentence of that section, uh, add a comma after the word consideration with council concurrence added. Then it makes, it meets the contract.
Clear where we're adding that.
This way, the members who get these rules would understand what the contract between the town-
So we have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to change section G in the rules to change in two places, so it should say with council concurrence.
Yes, sir.
Steven?
Uh, yes, Mayor. That is in, the, the rules are not aligned with the contract. Underneath, uh, garden rules, which is section two-point zero-two, um, and the, which is page two-oh-nine. Any and all amendments to the garden rules made by KTCW shall be submitted to the town manager or designee for approval, who shall respond to KTCW within five business days. And there's some other things about if the town wants to do changes, um, we can submit those to, to them as well. So, I, I think whatever we do, they just need to be consistent.
Yes.
Okay, for clarification, the garden rules, that portion of the garden rules is really more of a notice statement to the gardeners. Okay, so that doesn't supersede anything that's in the contract with the town. The town, the contract with the town says again, as Steven said, that we have to go before the town, go to the town manager to change any rules. So we would do that. And we'd get the town's approval for any rules that we wanted to change. And then, the, the notice would be made to the gardeners. And so, if the gardener didn't like the rule that the town and KTCW made, they could go to the town manager or to our board and, and change it.
They wouldn't know that because it's not stated in the rules they received. So that's why I was saying, put that in there, so at least they know they have another avenue. If they don't like what you're telling them, they have an advocate. And if, if council's the wrong word, we can change that to with town staff concurrence.
Okay.
Or town manager concurrence, whichever fits.
But, but the part-
And that would be fine.
That's in the rules is just a notice to the gardeners that-
Right, but they would know, if they don't like what you're telling them, they can go see that man over there.
So the intent of the rules is merely to be an exhibit that the town has agreed to, but if they contradict the contract, they need to be corrected.
Contract supersedes, yes.
Needs to be corrected, so it's the same.
Okay.
So we can change that to with town manager concurrence or?
Well, you have a motion and a second. Are you wanting to change your amendment to say with town manager?
Town manager concurrence.
Does the second agree?
Yes.
Alright, so we have a motion to amend section G of the rules to add in two places with town manager concurrence, and the second has agreed. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to amend, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. And I have two opposed, Ro and Shoffner. Alright, I would like to, um-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
There's another one.
Just a second, I was-
I'm sorry.
Gave myself the floor, but okay.
Sorry, I thought you were moving forward, okay. Sorry.
Call him out of order, Greg.
Nick, can you have the floor? Yes, I can, thank you. I guess I could have turned it over to the mayor pro temp.
Yes.
Please, please.
We would have been done in five minutes.
Wait a minute, you got a list here, two pages. I think the point that-
Twilight savings time is going to change soon.
I think that the point that was made on page two-thirty-six about background checks, if I understand it correctly, I don't see any need to have background checks in this item whatsoever. So that's just me. If there's any references in the contract of background checks, that'll be removed. And I didn't find what section it was in.
Would you like to, uh, make that in form of a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I move that we remove all references to the background checks from the contract.
Second.
So Sanders moved, Ro seconds, thank you, uh, Councilmember Ro for helping me out there.
No problem, sir.
Any discussion about removal of the background checks? Hearing none, all in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Shoffner opposed, everybody else voted for. Alright, we're back to the, uh, main motion as amended thus far. Anybody else?
I have another amendment.
Yes, Councilmember Perro.
Section G, page two-two, two-thirty-two, down at the bottom under waiver. Uh, I, uh, propose we add the same statement under that paragraph as we did above under changes in the rules. Any waiver by KTCW of these rules must be in writing and signed by KTCW and approved by the town manager for consistency.
Do you have a second?
Second.
A motion to amend section C, I mean, uh-
G.
G, where it's talking about waiver to indicate the town manager's prior approval, seconded by Reed and moved by Perro. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to amend, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Uh, that one's unanimous. Anybody else?
I have a question. Um, I don't know where this is or if it's there, but I've mentioned this. There was talk of a, originally when this was brought up, we talked about this being fenced and locked and whatnot. I've been out there and I know that that's not the case. There was one time talk about a split rail fence. I still think that, you know, and the chief can probably speak to this, if there's any crime, I mean, there's crime in Trophy Club, but vandalism is, is probably mischievous boys out running around the park at night smashing up-
Our girls.
Most likely it's going to be boys, but sure, okay, the girls could do it too. I really think that if we're going to do this, we should do it right, and I think making sure that we, there's, there's really nice wrought iron split fence out there now. And this is something we asked for, guys, in the very beginning, is continue that fence out and just, you know, it doesn't have to be as high, maybe it's four feet or something like that, but just some level of deterrent. Last thing I want to see is all this effort be put into there and a couple yahoos were out there at ten o'clock at night and ran their bikes all through this thing and, and messed it all up. So, I believe that, I want to go back to the original spirit of this agreement and, and require that they fence this facility.
I think Adam looked at some wrought iron fence, did you not?
We have some, it, it, it's questionable whether, it won't make the entire run though, um.
Uh, and Adam, honestly, I, I don't want to solve the problems tonight, we're, we're going to, it'll be all night, let's, I think we're giving guidelines, let them do it, but I think that was the original spirit of the agreement and I'd like to ask that we include that in here.
Alright.
And I make that motion.
I'll second that.
Uh, alright, Councilmember Reed-
Makes a wrought iron fence motion.
Moves that we include in the plans, uh, that a wrought iron fence encompasses the entire area of the garden.
And a locked gate.
And a locked gate, and Councilmember Perro seconded, is that right?
And whose burden is that?
It's K, it's theirs, I mean, it's their garden.
Yeah.
They've already got a start because Adam found some fencing, and so they-
It was supposed to be there in the beginning.
There's something to get going.
Yeah, this was, this was originally, this is not a surprise.
Right.
Alright, uh, so we're merely reaffirming the fact that a wrought iron fence is required in order to accomplish the task. And, uh, that is the motion, all in favor of the motion, show your hands. It is unanimous. Alright, any other changes to the contract?
I have a question.
Just one moment, I have, Mr. Lamont wants the floor.
Uh, Steven, the fact that the park's open from sunrise to sunset, can we limit the use of the community garden with different times?
You, you would probably restrict certain activities. You know, like a tiller, which, these are smaller plots, so that's probably unlikely, but, um-
Ice cube music.
I, yeah, just, Ryland's, Ryland's music. Adam, can you think of anything?
Well, I think it was in the, the comments that they returned as far as the hours of operations. I, I have one other thing I need to ask is for clarification on the fencing, if I can ask it. Because it's, it'll pop up later. So when council wants it fenced, we're no longer connecting to the existing wrought iron fence that's, that's on the property owners, or we're taking, we're creating a new line of demarcation. If I'm not mistaken, eighteen feet off that fence. So the shrubs will be in between the two fences, actually the shrubs or trees will actually be parkland, they'll be on the parks, they're not part of the community garden.
That would be the intent as I understand.
Okay, so they'll be ours.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want the neighbors to see their back fence, then another fence, then shrubs. Let's do their fence, a buffer, that and then the fence.
Why would the shrubs be ours?
Because they're not closed, they're not inside the community garden, and we would be the ones probably now, if you're running nearly ours, it'll probably be irrigation system, we'll, we'll go ahead and tap into our existing one.
So, so what do you mean that it's, so the fence runs back behind it too? Is that what you're saying?
There would be a gap between the garden, eight, eighteen feet.
Right, so, the, the way I envision it is you have the, the neighbor's fence, you have the eighteen feet. And in, and at the end of that eighteen feet, they have the back of their fence, the garden has the back of their fence. On the opposite side, they have to plant these shrubs to give the buffer. So they have a fence that keeps the riffraff out and then they have the- Kate, uh, the garden club.
So we haven't talked about that, so you need to make that motion.
I thought we did earlier on.
Not yet.
We get the screen for the homes?
Not yet.
I think that's what we're talking about now.
Can I continue?
Uh, I'm going to, if I can be excused a moment, council, I'm going to turn the chair over to Councilmember Lamont for-
Oh dear. Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, I have a question.
Unless, everybody wants to take a break? Nobody wants a break, so I'm going.
On page two-thirty-five, there's a statement about insurance, and it says, we are in the process of obtaining insurance and will provide proof of insurance as soon as we have it in hand. I'm just wondering when that will be and, uh, if you don't have it in hand right now, are people going out there and doing things without any insurance coverage? Nobody's doing anything? Okay, so when do you plan on getting this insurance in place? If this gets approved and we tell you to go ahead and move forward, are you going to have it? Okay, okay.
Just put in, yeah, you need to put in there that they have to have act, active insurance.
Alright, Steven, on page two-oh-nine, consideration, starting at the fifth line up. Each of the parties is providing monetary and in-kind services in order to establish and maintain the community garden. What will the town, because that's, that's one of the parties, I saw it, ongoing maintenance.
You're on page two-oh-nine, where, what section?
Consideration, two-oh-five. Fifth line, starting at the fifth line up.
Okay, and your question is?
We're going to be providing monetary funds for maintenance. Ongoing.
Yeah, I think the intent is within the garden itself is something that KTCW would be maintaining on a regular basis. Um, I think there is maintenance around that area, or they may need assistance with, if there was an issue with the water or something, that we, we could help provide that assistance to them, just like we would any other community group.
And I have a problem with the no third party beneficiary on page two-twelve, five-point oh-three. I would like to s- make a motion that KTCW not be allowed to contract with a third party to operate and maintain the property without approval of the council.
That's what it says.
That's what it says?
On the last sentence, it says this agreement shall not create any third party beneficiaries.
Don't even have that here. Motion withdrawn, okay.
Just testing everyone, right?
Just testing everyone. By the way. Alright, anybody help? Any other changes?
Page two-thirty-six regarding termination of a gardener's privileges. Comments made, we respectfully disagree that the town should have the right to terminate any gardener's privilege to participate in the community garden. Um, since this garden is in a town park, if we see something or we know something that requires us to take action to do that on behalf of the town, I think we should retain that, and that the user agreement should not be superior to, uh, any agreement with the town. And so I think we should always maintain that right if necessary to terminate any gardener's privilege if, if the town feels it's necessary.
You can have it back, I just- Did somebody make a motion?
No, no motions, we got lots of-
No, no motions, we got lots.
Just a clarification on a statement that was made on page two thirty-six.
You were gonna make my notes, good.
Patricia, would that be covered in, in the contract, that we would maintain that right?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the rules at this point, and I see the rules.
This is on page two thirty-six, on determination of gardener's privileges.
And I'm sorry, I'm looking at the word documents that I can make notes in it, so I'm not looking at the packet.
Can I say something?
Adam.
Councilman Perro, I think the intent, and I could be wrong, is the gardener's privilege would be just them as a gardener. The park ordinance would still dictate, if they committed any act that violates the ordinance, civil or whatever, we could boot them out of the park under that. I would, I would just say that.
Okay.
Just throw that out.
Well, I would just, the way this is stated, we disagree with the town should have the right to terminate a gardener's privileges. So, I want to make sure that's clear in their mind, that we do maintain that right, under our town ordinances.
Alright. That's not addressed in the actual contract. It's over in the rules where it's talking about terminating KTCW's ability to terminate gardeners for failure to comply with the rules. But that's, that specific provision is not in the contract for us to terminate a specific gardener's rights.
Do we need it in the contract?
Well, they're gonna have an agreement between the gardener and them, so they will have the contract with that third-party gardener. But if they're creating an issue, then, I mean, they could be criminally trespassed to some extent from the property, cause that's a program out there. It's not just, I just talked about wandering through the park, and they could be removed for violating our ordinances and, and state law as well, so.
I mean, if, if there is a significant issue that bubbles up to me, then it's gonna be probably a pretty big issue.
Yeah.
You're making a contract with an organization to manage that, to manage that area, and that's why these rules are in place, and that's why they have agreements with those users, so if, if there's an issue there, that is typically handled between the organization and that user. Now, there may be something we're not thinking of tonight that may reach that level, but if there is an issue with the health, safety, welfare, or there's a nuisance or something, then we can step in, you know, in, in that manner. They're, they're operating within a, a town facility.
Alright, does anybody else wish to make an amendment?
Did we, did anybody address the, the screening? Was that?
No, there isn't been a specific motion about the screening itself.
Okay, then my motion about maintaining the screening probably isn't valid yet.
Well.
Anyone?
Yeah, you made a.
Well, right here, it says town.
Comment.
I know, made a comment, but I was gonna comment, I didn't know if anybody had any thoughts on that, but on three point oh two, town maintenance and responsibilities, it's not the responsibility of the garden club to maintain the hedges outside of the garden boundaries. It's our responsibility, but I think that we should just include in here for park maintenance, so they understand what our expectations are in terms of height. So, I was, didn't know if anybody, any comments on the height of the shrubs or?
I think it would be appropriate to make a motion on the type of screening.
Right.
And height, if someone wants to make that as a motion. I think that's appropriate, and that will address by the fact that we remove the, or that we increase the distance, dealt with the five sites.
Right.
Being eliminated, and we've eliminated the compost.
Okay.
Right? In a previous amendment. So, now the only left is screening, if you wanted to say that you want them to be X feet tall, you want them, somebody said something earlier about them being planted before any construction, but I don't know if that was a comment or?
I think I made that comment. I think that the screening should be in place before construction as well as the fence. I mean, that just makes logical sense.
So, you're moving?
I move that the screening be in place before the beginning of construction, and the fence be in place before the beginning of construction.
He's not making it part of the contract, he's saying it be in place, which is, becomes our problem.
I don't, I don't know about that, Nick. I don't know if I agree with that.
That was part of the, that was supposed to be part of the deal.
Screening outside the fence, and it was our responsibility a while ago. Somebody talked about that.
No, I think we said we were putting the screening outside of the fence.
Okay.
I, I didn't, I didn't say one way or another. I think.
Alright.
I, I'm just, I'm addressing the fact that it needs to be in, the fence needs to be in, and I wanted to make sure that if there was a motion for screening, I'm not making that motion, that we need to address three point oh two. So, does, does, does anybody want screening, or have any idea?
I would ask a question too. Can you buy screening plants that are already six feet tall when you put them in? And who's gonna pay that cost if you buy them that size?
You can, they're, they're expensive. Probably estimate that you need five to seven. And they're Nelly R Stevens, which are a nice shrub, they, they're, they are thick and they're evergreen. But you're, they're probably three hundred dollars when you're talking a more mature plant like that. So.
And you'd need?
You need, you need five to seven or so, so you're looking at about two thousand dollars. Well, they grow in, they grow very thick and they grow very big, so you can't overplant. That's, they're, they're similar to what was planted behind neighborhood nine, Royal Troon. And that, for a few years, they're, they're, or what's back here behind the fire station, those are Nelly R Stevens, and they grow very big, very thick. They make a nice hedge, but they.
Takes several years to do that.
It takes several years to do that.
Alright, does anybody want to make a motion with screening? Mister Powell, come to the speaker, the microphone, and make a comment.
This, this whole screening thing is what got me up off of my chair to begin with, because of the lack of privacy. So, I would just ask you to be very sensitive about that. I mean, we, I granted, we didn't get it moved to the dog park, but now I think you owe me to, at least ask some consideration for privacy. So, I would tell you, and, and you're right, Steven, I just planted eleven of those in my side yard this year. At, and they are, there's no question, they're a little expensive, but I think if you want privacy, you do have to get them somewhat close together, but if you do anything less than six feet, then you've, then I don't have my privacy.
Gonna wait two years for privacy.
Yeah. And by then, I mean, we've already had this conversation with the realtor about selling the place because of this. And I don't want to go back to that, but also to think about, and because you're moving this back eight feet, but when you go down that side where you now say shrubs, in the old location, there's still the opportunity to look right into my house. So, I could be in my house doing, watching TV or whatever I want to, the gardener's out there looking right in my house. So, I think you have to take, we'd have to go look at that, and I'd certainly be willing to look at it with somebody, to see how that now affects our privacy. So. And just to the point of clarification, though, in KTWC's response to the rules, it says in there that the resident gets to pick the bushes, so, just a point.
Let me ask a quick question. Instead of bushes, and, and again, I'm not a gardener, I kill plastic plants, so.
I'm not either, so.
If, if instead of shrubs, we put up lattice work with vines that cover the lattice work. Okay, you'd get a lot more privacy instantly, and I think those lattice panels, those eight-foot lattice panels, you know, like six or eight feet tall, and about eight feet wide, they're pretty private by themselves, and if you put some vines in there in a very short period of time, there'd be a vine-covered wall on the back of the, the garden, and it might be faster and less expensive and still provide the privacy that Mister Powell's looking for. I'm just throwing that out, because I've seen it done in places, and it looks very nice.
Our neighbor did it, actually, and they just let it grow up the fence, but that was about a three-year process.
But the lattice itself is pretty.
Right, they just tied it to the fence. They didn't put the lattice in, yeah, you're right, you could put the lattice in there. I mean, that's something.
Is that something you'd even consider if?
We could talk about it, yeah. Yeah, I'm open to different suggestions. I just happen to like the Nelly Stevens hollies, cause that's what I put in, and I like it, so, since I'm looking for my privacy, but anyway. That's what I have to say about that.
Alright, thank you, Mister Powell. Alright, does anybody want to deal with any motion that deals with screening? If not, we are going to move on.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that KTCW provide six Nelly R Stevens for, for screening.
Six or six-foot ones?
Six. How many do they need? How many did we say? I thought we said six.
Need about five to seven, depending on the spacing.
So, si, so six, six-foot Nelly R Stevens.
Alright, so, Councilmember Schaffner, move that keep trophy club wild, be required to put at least six, six-foot Nelly R Stevens along the perimeter.
At least.
I'll second that.
At least six, six-foot Nelly R Stevens. So, Schaffner and Lamont seconded, is that right? Any discussion about that?
I, I do. I, I support it. I just, I want to make, I want to make a comment, guys. I want to make sure we don't get into a situation like we have in the past. So, can we be specific about it? It's at least six, but what is the clarifier for the at least? Are the Nelly R Stevens?
I, I didn't say at least, I said six.
Oh, you said six, so you're calling for just six.
No, I think he's referring to the feet, you're referring to feet?
No, no, I, I thought he said. He's just saying six, period.
So, Schaffner's motion is that keep trophy club wild, be required to plant six, six-foot Nelly R Stevens along the back, I'm gonna call it the back area of the garden between the Powells.
What's the, what, how, what's the distance?
Along the fence line. Eighteen feet now, buffer between his fence.
How far?
That's not the width.
What's the width of the garden?
On this, on this side.
What's the width on the gar, of the garden on the side?
Wow.
Yeah, it's pretty big. How wide is a Nelly R Stevens?
They'll, they'll do, at their base, they'll go, um.
Have a base over.
At the base, they'll do easy twelve feet.
But when they're six feet tall.
But when, but that's maturity.
Yeah.
I mean, they'll, they'll get there.
When they're planted at six feet tall, they're probably gonna be, what, about forty-eight inches across?
Probably, if that.
So, that would be twenty-four feet of the fifty covered.
So, half.
But realize that behind Royal Troon, we're eventually gonna have to cut either trees or shrubs.
Cause we overplanted.
Because they overplanted.
Yep, okay, I can support that.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, I'm confused. When a person buys a house, and it backs up to a public park, and he, I don't think they have any expectation that if there is an activity that goes on in that public park to have privacy from what goes on, if he has, chooses to have, not ha, or not have a privacy fence. So, I don't understand, and, and this is something that has just escaped me, so I'm hoping that somebody can enlighten me as to why you think he has standing to require us to put in.
I'll answer.
A she, a screen.
Well. I'd like to answer that.
Yes, Councilmember Kurtz.
Okay. In my opinion, right now, we shouldn't be having any of this conversation. None of this should have moved forward, because in the very beginning, we asked staff to get sign-off from everybody who lived over there, to say that they allowed this to go forward. What we found out after is there were at least one resident, and now we're finding others, that had many reservations about moving forward. If this council had known that the Powells were against it, we wouldn't have moved forward in the first place.
Okay.
So, that's why we're trying to mitigate, you know, their issues and make it happen, and then when we did say to move forward, none of this should have moved forward until we had a contract signed. So, you moved forward before you had a contract signed, the town moved forward before we had a contract signed. You know, now we're stuck here. But the Powells are in the middle of it, and so, before we had it signed, we said we wanted to make sure that there was something there. Even when we thought everyone agreed on it, now we find out they don't want it there, so we're trying to make the best. We understand what you're saying. I live on a golf course, I understand stuff's gonna happen, but we tried to make sure this wouldn't happen in the beginning, and we're still in the same position, so that's why we're trying to accommodate them.
Okay.
Councilmember Rowe.
I'd just like to add, and I think there's a, there's a, there's a nomenclature that we use a lot here when we talk about parks, and I, and I think it, it gets to the heart of what Mister Powell is trying to, the point he's trying to make, is that when we decided to place the garden there, when we made that decision, we changed the use of that portion of the park from a passive use area to an active use area. It went from an area that was open, that had a, a trail kind of nearby to a place that was now going to draw people. So, we did change the use of it, and so that's why what Tim said was valid in terms of the reason we wanted to lay the groundwork in the beginning was because we were changing the use of it, we're creating an attraction now. So, it, it really, whereas before, he might have some kids throwing a ball once in a while, or, or people walking their dog through, or jogging, it, it's, it's a lot different. Now, he's got someone who's going to be spending, people, when they're there, they're going to be spending significant amounts of time there. So, to me, that's where the standing comes from, is that we changed the usage style of that section of the park.
Okay. Alright, so we have gone from back and forth about what kind of screening to use, and we've, we've increased the setback, or the distance from his property by another eight feet, so now we're at eighteen feet, I believe.
Correct.
And he's willing to look, consider lattice. I think we look at what, rather than just arbitrarily decide that you're gonna make us buy six of these plants, then let's look and see if maybe lattice is a better, a better solution. I mean, I, I think that it's, it's rather arbitrary to just say, they have to buy six plants, and then we buy the six plants to find that it's not adequate. And, and that's, that's my concern, is that there's just, it's just an arbitrary fix, and I would rather that we come up with what's reasonable for both parties. And that's my, my comment.
Thank you very much. Alright, girls, thanks for staying the length of time you did. I'm sorry we didn't get through for you. But, thanks for coming. Alright, so we have a motion by Schaffner, seconded by Lamont, to require the planting of six, six-foot Nelly R, Nelly R Stevens at the, what I refer to the back of the property.
Could I, could I make an amendment to that, please?
You can.
I'd like to make a motion to have KTCW and Mister Powell get together and find an acceptable screening methodology. And once that's decided and agreed to, then KTCW will go ahead and install same.
That has to be passed to Adam and the town.
Well, if it's lattice, if it's Nelly R Stevens, if it's.
I don't know if the town, if it's approved, you know what I mean? You can't just, oh, go ahead, that's your motion.
Do you have a second to the motion? No second to the motion, it fails, alright? Just me personally about the comment of that. I'm not in favor of having lattice screening, because the lattice will rot and ultimately become a maintenance issue. I'd rather just have raw shrubs that you can, personally, so that's just me. Alright, so we have a motion before us. Any other discussion about the motion?
Yeah, I, I do. I, I don't know how to get here, but I, I get the feeling that six is not enough. I don't know what the right answer is, and I don't know how we come up with the right answer, but I don't want to talk about this again, so let's put the time in tonight to decide it. So, is it, Adam, how far are they, what, what?
I mean, if, if council has a, a minimum, to be at the Mount Six, I, I, and this is my just opinion, I would be the best entity to work out the solutions with the Powells, that this doesn't come back, and it's, it's done. And just to let council know, we had planted cedars along the fences farther down. There's some ground considerations there too, so I believe I could work with the Powells, and they, they would be.
I think if we said six-foot tall minimum of six, and then let Adam work with the Powells on the distancing, I would be okay with that.
I'd be okay with that, but I, you know, I have to be realistic. You're not gonna get these giant trees that are, you're not gonna get full coverage immediately. I mean, that's just, it's just not gonna happen.
I agree with that.
You know what I mean? So, when he works with you, there's just no chance that you're gonna get a full shrub, you know, that you're not gonna be able to see through, it's just.
So, Garrett, did you make a motion?
Well, well, no, what, what I'm trying not to do, Tim, and I agree with you, is I, I don't want to go back out there, and we see that these are seven, eight feet gap.
Oh, I agree exactly what you're saying.
Gap's not gonna be filled in.
Yeah.
So, I think if we look at the, Adam, you can work out what the growth patterns of these plants are, and if we, if we amended it to a minimum of six, that would be worked out, then.
Alright, so your motion to amend is to say.
Minimum of six.
Require a minimum of six. Do I, and do I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Alright, so we're talking about the amendment, to say a minimum of six, six-foot Nelly R Stevens. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to amend? Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to amend, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. And so Phillip has opposed, everybody else voted for. Is that right? Did you vote for?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we're now back to that, um, amendment, which is now, uh, changed to be a, a minimum of six-foot, six, six-foot Nelly R. Stevens. So it's been changed to be minimum.
Minimum of six, six-foot.
That's, that's what we're back to. Same vote you fixed, you just had, but now it's been changed.
My question is, if it's more, then what are you going to do?
Didn't address that.
But you're saying minimum, so I'm asking the question.
Who's responsible?
Yeah.
Is this the town, or is this them?
This is their.
The motion was KT, Keep Trophy Club Wild.
This is their, KTCW. Oh, okay.
That's the question I'm trying to ask. KT is responsible.
As I understood, your motion was, uh, Keep Trophy Club Wild was being required.
This is our contract with them. It's what they have to provide to build this garden.
Okay, what I'm asking, if it's more than six.
Phillip's point is, is that if you, if you vote in favor of this, they would be obligated for six if the solution is twelve. The, the town would be obligated for.
Or somebody would. I'm asking, that's who I'm asking who's obligated.
I'm not saying I have an answer. I just perceive a problem in the future.
How can I vote on, I, I don't know.
All right, Veronica, you want to make a comment? You want to come up to the microphone, please? Wait till you get the microphone. Wait, till you get to the microphone, please. Thank you. All right.
Between the two wrought irons fences over there, that property is not the garden's property. That's a town's park property. So I'm just wondering why KTCW has to install those, uh, shrubs over there, because that's on town's property.
None of it is, none of it is your property. It's all town property.
Right, correct, but that's the outside of the fence.
And it's a requirement if you want to do the garden. That's simple.
Okay, thank you.
You do know they make the lattice out of composite and vinyl, not necessarily wood, so it doesn't rot, just.
Adam?
Mayor, if, um, if the minimum is six, and the town worked the rest out with Mr. Powell above that amount, the only thing I want to say is Tree City monies could be used toward that. Um, and the ideal planting, though, is not quite yet. I, I really would hate to put these in the ground.
For a time of year.
How much mitigation do we give up with the?
Until October, you know, toward the end of October.
Thirty-two thousand.
Um, but I think, I think that's going to be an equitable solution, um, because above that would be us. And, um, I, I do think that would suffice.
All right, so what I'm hearing from Adam is it's not the best time to plant it, and he may have some tree money to do that.
You could, you could plant in later October, be fine. Just right now, you'd be, with that ground, Harmony Park's actually pretty hard.
It'd be, it'd burn out.
It would, it, it might die.
Okay, so let me say this, Phillip, let's make you happy. A minimum of six, when the trees are planted, there's at least, they're no less than four feet between tree.
No more than.
No more than.
No, he said less.
But that's not what he meant.
No le, no more.
That's what he said.
So basically, like Adam said.
So it'll give them room to grow in.
But I'm saying, KTCW pays for six, and then it's.
No, if they need more than the, four feet between each tree, and however many it takes to fill that in, they put them there. I mean, it's simple. They're providing screen.
He's clarifying that, then.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay. So no, no town funds are expended?
No.
All right, so, uh, we have a, uh, a motion to amend that has been amended.
So what did I mean?
That says, um, a minimum of six, six-foot Nelly R. Stevens be planted by Keep Trophy Club Wild along the border of the garden between the Powells and the garden. And are you wanting to say?
No.
Not more than four feet.
Thank you. Not more than four feet between each plant.
There you go. And then I'm done.
All right, Susan, did you say something? Okay. Yes, please come to the microphone.
But I want to drag this out, because I really need to go, guys. I got a wedding in thirty-two days, and I have stuff I got to go home and do. Um, but anyway.
Thought you were already married.
And I'm number thirteen.
Good to board that.
Yes, and that, luckily to a very patient soul. Um, but anyway, um,
Now she forgot what she was going to say.
No, I'm just, I, I want to word this correctly. I, I, I just am sitting back there, and I just want to make sure this slippery slope that you guys are heading down, okay? So anybody that.
Long as they're Nelly R. Stevens at the end of the sun.
Anybody that buys behind a park, or anybody that buys but near commercial property, you're going to do some remediation like this? I, I just.
No, that's.
I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around this whole thing.
We, to make sure.
Excuse me? I wasn't disrespectful to you.
Susan. Thank you. What we directed staff to do was to make absolutely certain that we didn't have any issues with the abutters, or we would have looked for a different site. We can't tell what happened and what not. I'm not going to say, but at the end of the day, somebody who, in a butter, did not want it there. Nothing should have been done. There should have been no dirt moved, but there was. So the contracts weren't signed. There was supposed to be no movement. We were supposed to get okays from all the abutters. None of that stuff happened. So we ended up where we are now. So internally, it's been handled, but now we're trying to deal with the external problems.
Watch that slope.
Uh, believe me, yes, we realize it.
I know. All right. So we have a, um, an amendment that has been changed that had the word minimum inserted. And that passed?
Yes.
I've lost track totally. And then we have now another amendment being proposed that not more, that the, that the Nelly R. Stevens be not more than four feet between each plant.
Correct.
And, and Reed made that motion, and who seconded?
Nobody so far.
Nobody.
Oh, nobody.
I'll second.
All right, let's talk about that amendment. Any discussion about that amendment? Four feet between. Yes. Ms. Corbin.
All right, so just with regard to this motion in general, how much did you say the Nelly R. Stevens are apiece?
Our cost is probably three hundred dollars or so.
All right, between insurance and the cost of six Nelly R. Stevens, there's a good chance that we won't be able to make this viable. I'm going to be very honest with you. And if your goal is to make this so intenable that we want to walk, that we will walk away, we will walk away. So maybe in the, in a conciliatory, I mean, we're, we're trying to be very gracious about this. But, um, I, I feel, the feeling I get is that you aren't interested in this contract going through. So, because of so many, of this particular issue, um, so I, I think in all, with all due respect, I think we will probably have to pass.
Can, can, can I say something, Nate?
Yes, Garrett.
I, I take exception to that, and this is why. I, personal exception, because we've spent an inordinate amount of time on this, and I know y'all have as well. And it goes back to what Tim said. If it was followed the proper way in the beginning, then these problems wouldn't have happened. So y'all moved forward with part of the town's help as well, pushing this forward. We're trying to find solutions based around what we originally set up.
With all due respect.
And so I take exception that you come up and say, well, now you're trying to make this too onerous for us to do it, and so I'm not going to do it. I mean, I, I feel like you're saying.
I've had to pee for an hour and a half.
I, I feel like you're saying, you're not giving me exactly what I want, so I don't want to do it.
No, I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is, is that, that we, we agreed to, to work out a solution that if we could with the Powells. I mean, and I, I've explained to you, I don't understand, it's like Susan said, that you've set a precedent here, and I, I have not, through this entire process, understood why a person who built a house or buys a house next to a public property has an expectation to have this kind of screening, okay? And with all due respect, we have not moved forward with the town. We have moved forward behind the town. Because everything we've done, it's not like a, any of us went out and started work without the town's approval.
We understand that.
And we, all we did was what we were led to believe, we did it in good faith, that we were supposed to be doing. And the reason that the contract didn't, wasn't done initially without pointing fingers or without naming names was because we felt it was in the best interest of, for moving the project forward for us to bow out.
All right, so that doesn't really, thank you for your comments, but that doesn't address the motion to amend, but I appreciate it. All right, so the motion to amend is to require four foot between each plant. Any further discussion about that? Hearing none. Call for the vote. All those in favor to require four foot between each plant, show your hands. All opposed. And I have two opposed, which is Schaffner and Perro. All right, so we are back to the amendment as amended, saying a minimum of six, six-foot Nelly R. Stevens that are planted four foot apart. Any further discussion about that item? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign. Only person opposed was Mr. Perro. And so that amendment has happened. Uh, I appreciate your comment about not being able to move forward, um, financially. Maybe there are people that are willing to contribute to make that happen, so that it's not your burden. So, so, uh, I understand the tendency would be walk out, say, to heck with you guys. That's not what we're trying to do. I take exception to the fact that your impression is that we're trying to stop you. That's not what we're trying to do. That's not what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to move you forward in the best way I can to recognize that all people have rights in this particular situation, including the town. You're using town property. So we are repurposing what would be normally a park, in my opinion. I don't think of a park as a place that's a garden, in the definition of a park. So that's just me. But, so I think we're repurposing public use of it. But, all right. So we have a series of amendments, uh, that have been approved. We're all back to the contract with its exhibits. Does anybody else have any other amendments or changes? All right, uh, from my standpoint, I would make a motion to refer this item to staff to clean up the documents and bring back at the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to ask.
No, you don't have to.
I think we have Ryland's three items, the eight-foot buffer. Do we vote on that?
Vote, that was my, that was in the main motion.
Yeah, that was the original motion that.
The original motion. So if we, I'm, I'm referring the entire matter with all changes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we got everything.
But if we vote on the entire matter, then it can't be referred. Would be, because he made those changes to the original motion. That's the problem I have with it. And I don't want to vote without at least seeing some of this better, personally. I don't know about anybody else. So I made a motion to refer, to clean it up and bring it back to us.
I'll second.
So a motion made by Sanders, seconded by Perro. Anybody want to discuss that motion to refer?
Yeah, I, I'm going to vote against it because I think we've made it clear, I'm ready for them to go get the project started, move forward, and I honestly don't want to talk about it again.
I understand. All right, all those in favor of the motion to refer, show your hands. And I have three, four, all opposed. And I have four, uh, opposed, so the motion to refer dies. You're back to the motion, uh, which was made by Ryland with all of its amendments, which I'm not going to state. Uh, and, uh, what you're doing is referring it and hoping that staff may have got all the notes and we recorded everything appropriately to come back, that you're approving. All right. All those in favor of the motion as amended, show your hands. All opposed. Perro and Sanders voted against. The motion does pass. All right, everyone, thank you for your patience. I know it was difficult to get through, but, uh, we are at that point. So item twelve
Nick, let me take a recess, I think.
Uh, is dealt with, and we will take a, uh, seven to ten-minute recess. It's fifteen minutes till ten. Counsel's in recess. It is six minutes till ten, and we have returned from recess. Uh, we are going to go to item thirteen, counsel, to deal with it quickly, so our decision can leave. Item thirteen, consider to take appropriate action regarding committee proceeds from the July fourth fun run event to the thirtieth anniversary committee. Anyone wish to make a motion?
Our move, we approve number thirteen.
Second.
That's quick.
Fourth. I have a motion to approve the staff recommendation from Garrett Reed and seconded by Councilmember Schaffner in reference to the transfer of the funds to be used by the thirtieth anniversary committee. All in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. I'm sorry, Susan, did you want to talk? All right.
Thank you so much.
We're approved. All right, now to get back in order somehow, maybe.
Nine.
All right, this should be quick. Item number nine, receive public input regarding the police and town hall facility discussion of same. Uh, did anybody, I, we're getting there real quick. There's not going to be any comments here. No respect. Okay, anybody want to make comments about, uh, the police and town hall facility? Hearing none. We will then move on to item number eleven.
Item ten.
No, I'm moving to eleven.
Okay.
Because I've already been giving trouble about the soccer guys back there, and they told me they were going to throw soccer balls at me if I didn't get to it. And look, they have them. Chief, protection, please.
Yes, sir.
All right. Consider to take appropriate action regarding Lakeview Elementary Soccer Fields and receive an update from town, town engineer Tom Rutledge, and Tom is absent, but will receive a town update. I mean, a, uh, an engineering update. You want to say anything to us?
Got a free presentation.
All right.
Mike Wilson with Teaknoll and Perkins, eleven hundred Macon Street, Fort Worth. This is the presentation, just an update for the soccer fields at Lakeview Elementary. The, uh, existing aerial on the north side of Lakeview Elementary, bordered on the north by the, the drainage channel here. Y'all can see that, correct?
Yep.
Okay. And then there's an existing swell that's on the south side of, of this open area. It kind of bisects the open area all around here. But there's an existing drainage draw here, and that's what set our limits of the improvements here. Of course, we could always go into here and expand these improvements, but we would have to deal with this drainage bisecting the property, so that was kind of the, uh, accurate place to, to set that. And working with, uh, town staff, what size field we looked at was a U-five, U-six. And so based on the existing fields that are, uh, currently in the town, that's a nine, roughly a ninety by sixty for U-five, U-six. So we took that dimension and then gave a couple of layouts, um, within that three-point-two acre area. So this first option, um, lays out a few fields in the north-south direction, and then a few in the east-west direction. And with either one of these options, uh, obviously, the, the staff can come in and orient whatever size field, uh, is necessary, but we just took the U-five, U-six to fit the most fields possible within there. So that's the first option here. The sec, second option would be just land out fields in an east-west direction. What we did is we put some passive areas between there, about twenty-foot wide gaps, because although this said it would be used for practice mainly, most likely it may be used for some games, so we wanted to give some, some passive space in between fields here. And looking at the cost opinion, I believe that's in your packet, uh, there's two options. Option A would include going in, basically ripping the field, uh, regrading it, bringing in topsoil, landscaping, irrigation, uh, basically just smoothing out the field, um, and then putting that layer of topsoil on there as, as Adam had said earlier tonight, the ground is very hard, and even at this site, it's, I mean, it is packed with hard clay, and there's some undulations in it, so that would, uh, smooth that out. And then option B, the only difference between option A and option B is that layer of topsoil, um, for an. For an additional $25,000, you get that imported topsoil, and that would give you a smoother playing surface, more uniform, your grass would grow, and then both options include a full irrigation system for that. So, just a quick update, and I'm here to answer any questions.
All right, council, any questions? Hearing none, I would make a motion that we move forward with the project under option A.
I second that.
Any discussion?
I agree with the preparation of the area by that technique, I think it's important. If we're gonna spend money, 160,000 plus, let's recondition the topsoil so that we have a better chance for turf to take hold. I do want to make sure, though, that we have further discussions about exactly how to utilize the space. I think when, and I guess, well, I guess Tim was the only one who wasn't here when we approved this in the budget last summer, but my thought was that this would be a space that would have multiple uses, and soccer would be part of it, so 13 U5, U6 fields might not be the right solution, it might be a mix and match of some things, but I do want to make sure that when we say we're moving forward, that we're moving forward with the site, and not necessarily the layout of the fields.
And I agree, I agree with Ryland, and with Nick, that option A, but I also want to make sure that our utilization, I think that this adds about, wasn't it 17,000 ongoing to the budget?
It's about 13,000.
13,000. I want to make sure that our utilization is equalized amongst Independence, Harmony, and this park, because in my opinion, and this is just a layman's opinion, and I think that Tim and Ryland would both agree, what we saw when we went to Harmony, our divots, where the goalkeepers are, and those still are like that today, you know? And I think that things kind of get neglected, and I hope that we'll have a discussion at some point about utilization. If you look at the drill down numbers that Stephen provided this week, you see quite a bit of money going to Independence, and it drops off significantly to Harmony. And I think if you go and look at Independence fields, and you go and look at Harmony, you can see why that happens. And so I think that, I just don't want to spend $200,000, and then several years from now, we have fields that look like Harmony Park. I want to make sure we take care of them, and, and we kind of balance that utilization of money between the three parks.
It would be my intent of the motion that the exact arrangement of the fields and size was not part of my motion, that that's something that will have to be worked out with the association and staff.
Right. You know, one thing to follow up to Councilmember Shoffner's comment is, you know, Indy, or Harmony Park fields, they're older fields, they've been there a while, they probably do need some reconditioning, and by that, we probably need to start at least having the discussion about, do you want to start bringing in some soil amendments? Do you want to look at the turf and what you want to do regarding those, because they are older fields, they're a lot more compacted, there's some things we can do to make them a little bit nicer, but they do get a lot of wear and tear.
I guess, we were assuming that some work would be done on Harmony Park already, that hasn't been done. Maybe, maybe I, my timeline was off, maybe it's going to get done. But to a layman, and I hate to bring this up, but it looks like all the time effort, money is spent, you know, on our showpiece parks over by the schools, and Harmony Park is left. And to the soccer players, I can see how it seems like everything's going to baseball, and nothing's going to soccer, and to the parents who have just girls, it looks like everything's going to the boys, and nothing's going to the girls. And I'd like to, you know, be proud of all our parks.
Sure.
Do it, you know, as fiscally sound as we can, but I think we have to get better at it.
Let us see what we can do and bring something back to you guys.
Garrett?
I'm gonna speak in support of the motion. I think that if we're gonna do it, let's spend the money, put the topsoil down and do it right. And I really do support what, what you guys are saying. But not just in allocation of funds, but maybe in allocation of time spent, we can ask you guys on, if we provide these additional fields, we could use some rotation and not, you know, not just have everybody on those, but rotate them, because I agree, I mean, if you go over there to, to the park, at the end of the day, I think it was supposed to get a splash pad at one time, and it didn't. It's got the old dilapidated bleachers, it's got the divots. I mean, you go over there, and it's kind of like the park that got forgotten. And, you know, it's, that's sad. I mean, it should be the same level, if that means some of the other parks need to be brought down to another level, but it should be equalized, and I think maybe we could rotate how practices and playing and time off, and I'd ask you guys to kind of look into that, so that they would have time to heal and whatever other maintenance needs to go on, but I support the motion.
One of my concerns is restroom facilities, and I think as you begin to look at irrigation and water at that site, you need to plan for restrooms in some fashion. I don't know if you can get permission from the school district to do that, but looks like they're allowing us to use most of the land. It seems foolish to just depend on portlets if you're gonna have that many fields, personally. So, I don't know where that money comes from, but.
It's not cheap.
But I understand.
It's more than the fields.
I'll just say this, Nick, I mean, I've had, we had kids playing out there, we practiced flag football, and the portlets have been used for, I guess what, almost, I've probably been doing this for 10 years, and soccer, different things, and it's.
Can the people who stay at the hotels use them?
That's a great question.
Yes, they can.
Greg, oh Greg. We'll bust them.
I like the way Greg thinks.
Can I? It's an inside joke, if you guys don't know it.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't kill it over the fact that.
I'm not killing it, I'm just saying, give some consideration. Yes, sir, please identify yourself and your address.
Matt Tibbetts, 211 Durango Drive, president of Greater Northwest Soccer. Mr. Reed, to your point, yes, that's the whole goal of this, is to get it back to the way it was 10 years ago, where Lakeview is our practice fields, and Harmony Park is our game fields, so similar to how Roanoke, sorry, similar how Roanoke has it now, which is, they have practice fields that they provide, and they have game fields. And that will hopefully eliminate the amount of money we have to pay. I've already talked to Adam and Tony about looking at, you know, kind of in the winter, in the summer breaks, courting off a little area that we can fix, and then, you know, in pieces, kind of thing, to make that work best. But that's the goal, is to get it back to the way it was originally, where everybody practiced at Lakeview, and Harmony was just game fields. That's the goal, so.
All right, thank you.
Can I?
Yes.
I know we were talking about maintenance of the field, upkeep, once we go in there. We are gonna have this large tract of land, that looks like it must be two acres, that's gonna sit right next to it. Are we at least gonna do something to keep that thing mowed under control? Because that thing gets very unruly, I hate to have that right near, so make sure that's in the maintenance budget, because that stuff gets two feet high, you know what I mean? You don't want that right outside there.
No. I don't want that creep coming in either.
All those in favor of the motion to move forward with the project option A, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. Sorry if somebody wanted to make a comment, but I moved us forward.
I also just want to thank Mike Wilson and his staff for the work they've done on this, as well as Adam, to stay really within the budget, and actually under budget by a considerable amount. That was my goal to them, and they've done a good job sticking to where I wanted them to be.
Thanks, Mike and Adam. And Mike, thanks for staying through the evening.
I'll just present these balls, and every of the kids signing them for you guys, as a thank you for doing this for us, so.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
And they're very excited about Lakeview and getting back, because Lakeview, honestly, that's where most of the soccer players come from, is Lakeview, so it's just a natural progression for that, so, thank you very much.
I don't know when it's gonna get done, but.
Hey, hey, baby steps, baby steps, it's all good, it's all good.
I would like to, at our, you know, budget workshop, budget planning meeting, to start thinking about the future, maybe we can do a portion of Harmony, you know, over several years, and kind of bring it back, something in January to talk about when we're talking about the future.
Yeah.
Sorry it took so long, guys.
All right, so I think we would go to item 10, and that would get everything down through 12 accomplished if we do item 10, am I right?
Yes, sir, or through 13.
Oh, could be, yeah, I hadn't gone to the other page. We did, yes, okay. Item 10, consider and take appropriate action regarding a resolution adopting an annual services and assessment plan update for authorized services, emergency services, for the Trophy Club Public Improvement District Number One, the Highlands at Trophy Club, and the proposed assessment role, setting a date for public hearing, authorizing the publication of notice, and directing the mailing of notices as required by law, enacting other provisions related thereto, and providing an effective date. We would be approving Resolution 2015-20, which would call for the public hearing to be September 22nd, 2015, is that right?
Correct.
And the assessment rate to be .07222 per hundred dollar evaluation. Do I have someone wishing to make a motion?
I was, until you rattled off that six precision decimal thing, now I gotta find it in writing.
Make a motion to approve 2015-20, and to hold a public hearing on September 22nd, with the rate at .07222 per hundred. Do I have a second?
That's fast, right, right.
Any discussion? Just for citizen that might view this, this is the same rate that mud residents pay in a mud tax, and it's our arrangement to charge the same amount in order to fund emergency services throughout the town at the same rate. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it was unanimous.
We'll take Tim's check.
For .07222?
It's in there somewhere.
Oh, Tim's is, isn't it? It is in there. If we went and looked for it, it would be.
Ted representative.
That's a big check.
It's a big check. Needs to be reappraised, doesn't it? Doesn't he have a new feature?
It's true. Shh.
They work at night.
Okay, I'm sorry. Item 14, consider and take appropriate action regarding ordinance of the town amending section B entitled Trophy Club Parks, section 8.12 entitled Parks and Recreation of Article 8 entitled Schedule of Fees of Chapter 1 Administration of the Code of Ordinances of the Town, providing for publication and providing an effective date. You'd approve ordinance 2015-26 approving the schedule of fees. And is there any someone wishing to make a motion or discussion?
We have one speaker on that, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
Sandra, she signed up at the beginning of the meeting.
She's been here that whole time too, hasn't she? Somewhere you got that for me, just a second. Sandra Doran? Chandra, excuse me, I'm sorry. Please state your name and your address, and you can address us and relate to that.
Chandra Duran, 2228 Galloway Boulevard, Trophy Club. My, wanting to make a comment about the fees for horseback riding. We have a horse rec, a business called Marshall Creek Ranch. It's located right behind Trophy Club on TW King. We live in Trophy Club, but the ranch is there, actually physically in Southlake, but where we ride typically is through the Trophy Club Park System, the hiking and equestrian trails. We opened in 2000, so we've been there 15 years, and back at that time when we started, it was managed by the Corps of Engineers, that was sort of our landlord, and then Trophy Club, Parks and Rec, I think, then leased the land, and we've been working for the last several years with, pretty closely with Adam and Joe, Jacob and Sherri Lewis, who I have to say, you've just been great. I mean, no matter what the outcome and what goes on, Adam is just a joy to work with, with businesses, as a business.
A joy. I didn't hear her say that, but that's why I'm all right.
And Jacob and Sherri, they're just.
I don't want to vote on that one.
But.
We're sorry. Please accept our apology for interrupting.
No, no worries. We're to the issue of the fees, so 15 years we've been there, we do public trail riding, just so you know what we do, we take people on trail rides by horseback through there, you know, so they can go to the lake and see the property, and they have the whole Texas experience. I would say we're probably the number one trail riding facility, based on volume and reviews and number of people that we have, and it's a blessing for us to be there, and I don't take it for granted, the trails are lovely, the lake is beautiful. So, now we're getting to the point where fees are starting to come in, and I don't have an exception with that, actually. It's great that we've gotten to use those trails all these years. What I would like to ask the council is, I've been asking since the, and Adam kind of gave me a heads up, you know, it's coming someday, and I just said, keep me updated, let me know. There's not a lot of us left that do what we do, there's two other major players, really, you know, as land dwindles away and it's developed, there's just, if, you know, we keep getting smaller and smaller, you're not gonna make a million dollars running a horseback riding business, but it certainly is a very Texas thing to do. So we do bring a lot of people in here who spend their dollars while they're here. But that being said, back to the fees, for us, because we're large, and our property abuts Core Land, so where our property ends, when you start riding on our property, you then just start, you naturally are on Trophy Club Park's land. And this $3 per horse fee for those who occasionally come through our side, most of the other trail back riding facilities go down to Southlake, and they park in that nice big parking lot with trailer parking, and that's where we find them. And the $3 fee is fine, I think, but for me, I would ask that we consider a concessionaire's or a vendor agreement, rather than me paying $3 for every single horse that goes out and tracking, 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 I would like to ask that we consider a vendor agreement, much like anybody else that's on the lake, or that does business with the cities. The boat people, for example, pay a vendor fee, the restaurants on the lake. So I am also a vendor and doing business. We're not actually, we kind of had an issue, if I could just touch real quick on, when the Core was our landlord, they first came to us and said, now, you're not allowed to be doing business on Core Land, but our business is really at our facility renting a horse, we're now riding on Core Land. So they were okay with that, as long as we followed certain rules and did maintenance. And up to this point, we were the only people that did maintenance on those trails. Self-serving, yes, of course, but we want the trails to look nice, we don't want trash on the trails. I hike those trails, and I also bike the trails at, behind the high school, and my husband and I also kayak on the lake. So we're out there all the time, whether it's on horseback or hiking. It's called a environmental fee, I think is what they're calling it, but for me, if I were to pay $3 a horse, I'm going to be paying Trophy Club, Parks and Rec about 1,500 a month, which is more than my mortgage, you know, and it's more than my insurance. So, and then there's times that we don't have any revenue, when the trails are wet and it's cold, we're closed. And so, and would I be still having to pay my fee on a concessionaire's agreement? Yes, I would. So, I thought long and hard about that too, and I don't want to cut my own throat here, you know, because we haven't taken a ride publicly since the end of February, because the trails have been closed. So we've been taking guests all the way down the street, down to Southlake, which for me is a liability even being on the road. I don't like it, but what could we do? That's where our summer camp kids went, that's where every trailer, that's where that parking lot is full, because everybody's going there. Southlake Trails were open, because what they did is just block off the trails that were wet. They just taped them off and kept people off of them, and people were pretty good about it. So, back to the fees, when somebody has the argument of, well, we, you know, we have to charge you if we're gonna charge other people, I agree, but I'm not like other people. I'm not just coming once or twice a month to casually ride the trails as a hobby. It's my livelihood, based on our reviews too, we run a very good business, we are very safety conscious, you can look at any website and Google us, and we're five out of five stars in 15 years, because I'm very big on safety and cleanliness and good horses and people having a good time. So I want to continue doing this business, but I don't want to put myself in the poor house, paying $1,500 a month to use the trails. So I just ask if there's, and you know what, if you do decide, no, we're gonna do that, I'm not gonna pout and stamp my feet, I. I'm grateful for what I have so far. And I'm grateful for Parks and Rec, as I said, they have been nothing but wonderful to me, and we work very closely together. So I would just like to ask if it's a possibility to consider why I can't either have a concessionaires agreement with the city or a vendor agreement and pay a flat fee, whether it's 500 a month, 600 a month, whatever you decided it is, I'm happy to do it. And I think that's, unless anybody else has any questions, that's really all I'd like to say.
Yeah, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Can you, can you tell me a little bit about your business? You, and let me be specific of what I'm looking for. You talked about kind of the Texas experience.
Yes.
Are you marketing and advertising to people outside of this region to come and participate in your?
We don't market at all. Our business is strictly word of mouth.
And where do people come from? Are they locals, or do they come from?
All over. We have lots of Trophy Club kids in our, you know, riding programs and our summer camps. But we do a lot of business through, you know, people coming in, you know, we, our guests mostly come from Dallas and South Fort Worth, and just all over. Oh, sorry. They, they Google where to go horseback riding, and we, we come up, because we're a large website, and we've been there so long, so we come up pretty quickly in that search. And then I think people kind of go by reviews, you know. There's some facilities that maybe don't have as many good reviews, and we have pages and pages. And I'm really proud of that. I like to run a clean business and, yeah, I take care of the trails. We talk about the environmental impact. What I like is, when it's dry, the horses maintain the trails. And I know that sounds silly, but by virtue of the horses going down the trails, we don't pay people to mow them. Tom and I, Tom mows, and I do the, the trail maintenance of the branches and the pick up the trash. That's all done by volunteer, not, not the city paying for anybody to keep those trails maintained. It's damaging when they're wet, and we try to work with him, trying to come up with a way to keep other people off of those trails. It ruins it for us too. If you walk on a trail when it's wet, a horse will tear it up, and it will dry that way. So you try to go down it as a hiker, you're stumbling, and you've got big divots that the horses have created, and now it's hardened like that, and it takes a long time to get that out. So as far as marketing, we don't. But being the number one facility, we get people from not only other countries that come in, and they want that, they just want that Texas thing.
I heard you say that, so I was wondering if there are groups that came in.
Yeah, I mean, horseback riding when they come. And I feel really passionate about, they're dwindling as it is, you know, it's hard. So I feel blessed that we have it right here. People come here and they're able to eat. You know, if we had more restaurants right now, you know, they're going to Babe's or Christina's or something around here, but a lot of people come through here. And I don't want to close up shop, and I'm certainly not, I don't mean to threaten, if you start charging me three dollars a horse, I just know based on the numbers, it's going to be painful. And, you know, I just ask that, you know, other people. Well, for example, like the other two players, the Lake Louisville, they have horseback riding there. It's Core land, they don't charge a dime to go on their trails. Benbrook is Core Lake, and they have horseback running, they don't charge a dime. Their trails are maintained by Tetra, and Tetra is a Texas Equestrian Association. And they do all the trail maintenance. So as long as they have an agreement with them, you keep the trails nice, you pick up trash, you don't tear them up, then you can continue to use them. But I do think we should charge. I'm in an agreement with that. You pay to come out to motocross, you can hike them for free, sure. So I'm not against the charging, it's how we're doing it. And since I'm a business, I'm different than somebody just coming up with a trailer.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you, Tim.
How many horses do you have?
We have 32.
32 horses. And how many times a day do you go out on the trails?
Well, in the weekends, we're really busy. And so we'll do, we do three rides, a 9:30, a 12:30, and a 3:30. That's our three time.
So the same horse can go out three times in one day?
Um, the same horse can go out twice. We really, with guests, we don't take 32 guests out. We'll take a maximum number of guests, somewhere between 12 to 14. And then we have our staff, our wranglers go. And some of those are boarders that aren't my horses.
Right.
So give or take, if you're asking, how many people on a typical Saturday? 48 people, if we're full, will be taken out, about 14 riders.
Right, I'm just trying to equate it with my business. So, you know, if I was, had a guest come in, right, I own fitness centers. So that person comes in, that person could use the club all day. So what I'm trying to say is, if you paid three dollars for one horse, but you're going out there three times, instead of paying nine dollars, you should be paying three dollars. So if it's, I'm just trying to equate it, that's the way I would look at it. So, so I get what you're saying, you want to definitely come to some sort of agreement, because you don't want to get hit every time you hit the trails.
Yeah, well, here's another thing. We have an easement with, with the town, with Parks and Rec. We have an easement through there, so we have a, we're a trailhead also. So we made that agreement once, the town of Trophy Club and the Parks and Rec leased that 100 acres, and now they became our manager or our landlord. Now the public can come and park a trailer and go out on the trails, through our property, or hikers. But, which we said to them, they've done that since we've opened, we've never charged for that. We don't charge, you know, a lot of Trophy Club residents, they cut through our property because we have bathrooms, we have water, and they can hit the trails with their kids and hike, and don't have to make that big trek back around. So we've never charged for that. But right now, with it being a trailhead and we're paying a per-horse fee, we've got the whole issue of, wait a second, who went where, and what did you have? And, you know, because we've got a, you know.
It's too tough to manage.
And not that we couldn't say to them, you need to pay us so that I can turn around and pay Trophy Club. But for me, it would be easier if it was a monthly fee. And I would probably, we have more hikers than we do at that trailhead than horses, and I would absorb that fee, you know, for the occasional people that park their trailer at my place and hit the trails. Most of them go down to South Lake, because it's a bigger facility to park their horse trailers at. So, yeah, so that's how we would probably handle it.
So, a couple of things. Is it three dollars, do you plan on making it a surcharge, like whatever the bill is? Let's say it's $50 plus $3?
Right, if it was a per-horse fee, we definitely would go up on our rates. But it's the tracking, the monitoring, the maintaining. Even if we're closed, such as we were this year, I would prefer to have a flat fee that I pay, because it can always go up. If, you know, if Trophy Club decides, you know, we started you at 500 a month, and we can never get larger, based on, we only have room for so many horses, and we need room for them. So that, for us, we're never going to be able to take more than we do now. But Trophy Club might say, now we're going to charge you 600 a month, or whatever it is, and it goes up. So they have the ability to do that, but we won't grow. So for me to have a flat month, a flat fee, even if we rained out all month and didn't take one rider, that would be, well, easier and more cost-effective. It would be less expensive to me than paying 1,500 a month. That's a, that's a huge amount of money for me to pay to Trophy Club every month.
So you're saying that it would be a fixed monthly fee irrespective of the park was closing out? Like, for instance, the last three months it was closed.
It's a rental fee.
So you'd be paying?
Yes, and then so Trophy Club knows they have that money as well, they can, you know, count on that. And I know that's just part of my fees, that's just part of our expenses. Irregardless, this year was pretty bad, but we're, we'll be open soon. But we've been closed, we have not been on the trails since the end of February.
So I guess, Mike, I go back to Adam now. I know the park board discussed this, or maybe the subcommittee. I just want to give us their reasoning for the three dollars compared to a monthly fee.
What the, what the board, what the board suggested was, I mean, we laid out a multitude of options. You could do a flat fee. What they suggested was, all your entry fees in the Trophy Club Park are impact fees, so it's per visit. So it's the impact of anybody on a system, be it a motorcycle, be it a car, be it a boat. And so what they, what the board ended up suggesting is, yes, a concessionaire fee, but it's a general impact fee of three dollars for horses. The concessionaire fee, what the board recommended, is three dollars still. It's just that we engage in a concessionaire fee, and we settle up with her separately, but it's still three dollars per horse, as opposed to a flat concessionaires fee. So we have the ability to monitor how many horses come into our system.
And how do we do that?
Well, we, well, you put up trail cameras, that's how we originally got all our counts. Or if you were doing a concession fee with them, there would be a level of.
Trust.
Trust. That's exactly right. And so if it was three dollars per that, you would work with them, and they would settle up on a monthly. It's still the three dollars per horse, it's still an impact fee, unless you went to a flat fee. But what the board recommended was three dollars for the businesses, and that wouldn't just be them, that'd be Widowmaker, it would be, and that's what South Lake wanted to do as well.
Three dollars or a concessionaires fee?
No, in a concessionaires fee. The agreement is, it's three dollars per horse, is what the, what the board.
Not a flat fee.
Not a flat fee.
So how many other businesses operate like, like she does on our trails?
Marshall Creek Ranch is the main one. That go to our park, there's probably two others. Widowmaker and the other one, I always forget their name. It's something that doesn't have anything to do.
And they'll be paying these fees?
Yeah, we would approach all of them, as does South Lake, that's what they're doing.
And then every individual rider that goes out there, they would go in and there's a.
You would have a pay station at their entrance. So a general person that came through their, their facility, and Chandra's right, they have, they have facilities, they're a public entry now, so if it was a general thing, they would pay when they entered, and just basically like you'd see at a TPWD park with the slots and money. Obviously, a little harder to manage, but our primary entrances from non-users are probably from their slot, from, from, off of TW King, they're the primary user. The, the general entries, we pick up a number at the main gate, which those are really easy for us to monitor. So if you're just a general user, you would just pay to come in the three dollar fee.
Right.
They would be under concessionaire. So all the, all the businesses, what the board proposed was a three dollar concessionaire fee.
From a management standpoint, because that's what I do, is what we're asking now is for individual businesses to now manage each and every transaction, and Parks and Rec to manage each and every transaction. At the end of the month, you're supposed to reconcile how many people came through. You're supposed to check her business via, via tape.
Via tape, or we would engage in a contract with them, but yes.
That's what I'm saying, the cost factor, just my opinion, I would be working on a flat fee solution that's, just my opinion. Being in the business that I am, and if she's, does what she says she's doing, where she's working on our trails and doing that thing, I don't know if the other folks are.
They're definitely volunteers.
That's a little different than the average person coming in, spending three dollars. So I'm just giving my opinion that that's, you know, I'd like to make it a win-win for both, I mean, so.
And I disagree with you.
You can, but you're a palate.
I think that she, and I'll tell you, I sold 2,987 pallets today. So it's not hard to manage. I mean, I know exactly how many pallets I sold. So I think if I ran a horse business, I would know how many horses go through a gate. And so, so I think that, I don't think that on a management, that, I'm for the three dollars, and here's the reason why. I think that the impact on the park is, is great. We were talking just earlier about a splash, splash pad that was supposed to go to Harmony, different things that were supposed to go to Harmony that didn't. How much were the low water crossings that we put in Trophy Club Park?
25,000.
So 25,000 came out of the park bond and went into Trophy Club Park, a park that we lease, we don't even own. So it went, we spent 25,000, and most of that was for horses to cross low water crossings. So while, you know, one thing that I do want to make sure, and this is going to be more in the management, if we do the fee, the three dollars, I think that it needs to go towards improving the trails, things of that nature for her business, you know. So I don't think that we just take it and then dump it somewhere else. At least a good portion of that money needs to be used for that, if we're going to go that route. But I still think that three dollars is manageable.
It is manageable, except I'm in the business also, and I pay a flat fee for the property I use. You want to come to me and say, well, you have 6,500 members, pay me $2 per member? I'd say, no, I'm going to pay you a monthly fee. It makes my life easier, it makes their life easier. I understand we're looking to get money, but, I mean, I honestly, nothing against you, I worry more about our staff having to manage it than anything else, so.
I just wanted to say too, and that was never an issue on my part, I never, managing, of course, I, I know every single dime we make, because I report every dime, I tithe my money. I know every head that goes out on that trail. So that, that was never something I said, it would be difficult to manage. It wasn't about managing, it's about the amount of money. Because the other two horseback riding businesses don't come up to our trails. And here's why, because we don't have the ability. They both have large eight and 10 horse trailers. They can't park at our place, because they can only have a four horse trailer. So they can't park at the end of TW King, there's no facility there to park a large trailer. So they park at South Lake. And it would, by horse, it takes two hours to get from the South Lake Trailhead all the way to our ranch, and then another additional 45 minutes to get up to the guard shack. So they don't come through our side. Are they out on the trails? Very much so. So what, what I'm saying is that Marshall Creek Ranch, me, I'm going to be paying for the horses on the trail, because basically that's who's on the trail. We have occasionally people at the guard shack, we have people that trailer up there, you know, three and four horse trailers. So again, it's not that we are, and when I say we as a town, we're not losing all this revenue from these other businesses either, because they don't come over here. If you decided to build a huge area, they could come to the guard shack now, because they could pull in there. There's room, but you're limited on what you can do. South Lake Trailhead has bathrooms for their guests, because they, they arrive there, and their people sign in there and leave from there, they have to do everything there. My facility has an actual bunkhouse. You go in, there's bathrooms, there's helmets, there's waivers to sign. So these other businesses have to have all that there in their trailer, so they need the bathroom. They need to have a place where, you know, people can sit. And that's only located, we don't have that at the, at the guard shack. There, there's a place to park, but that's it, there's a bathroom there that they can use. So the issue that I had is the exorbitant amount of money that I would have to pay, not the ability to manage it. I think that 1,500 is excessive, I do. And again, I'll, you know, what do we do? But I would prefer that I didn't have to pay that large of a fee as a, as a business in taking horseback rides on those trails. So that was really where the issue was coming in, not so much as a headcount, I have paperwork on everybody. So I know who's riding, and a waiver, and a name, and a telephone number.
So I guess maybe another question would be, and it's kind of a tough question, but at 1,500 bucks a month, that's like 18,000, but of course, like now, you wouldn't be paying it. So it kind of balances itself out.
Right, now if I was that right, I wouldn't be paying.
But on a 600, that's, maybe that's a little too low, because that's, I don't know, quickly, that's 7,200.
Right. Yeah, and that was just a number.
How high would you be willing to go? Let's just ask that question.
I'm, I'm, you know, I leave it at it to you. I'm happy that it would be anything other than 1,500. So that number can be determined, but I would, I would prefer to pay a flat fee for even things that Tim brought up, just the fact that I have to track and report, and the cameras, and the, and I'd rather cover the occasional trailer that parks on my facility and absorb that fee, you know, than, than doing that, and the amount of money that it costs, so.
I do have one question. Why would you need to, why would you be responsible for absorbing the cost of someone else using your public trailhead when you granted us an easement that made that possible? That doesn't seem right. Surely that's not the case, right?
I'm sorry, we, we gave them the easement. They, they, the ranch doesn't like going down TW King. So we worked, the Core wouldn't allow them to use it. The Core wouldn't allow them, so we worked basically to allow them to create an easement that can access.
You stated earlier, you said that public people can access.
They do, yeah.
Are you talking people with horses?
Okay, well, I still want to make sure, I still want to make sure my question gets answered. So, but, point, point stands. Someone, if I had a horse, that's laughable, but if I had a horse, I don't like to ride something I can readily fall off of, anyway. If I had a horse, and I walked, rode him up there and walked right in, why are you responsible for that?
Well, right now, I mean, once there are cameras and everything else, what are they going to do? Otherwise, he's going to have to put a, a thing where you, what, are going to put money in a slot?
That's what he just said, right?
Yeah, so now, and I can just put an envelope in there with nothing in for all that matters.
So I just wanted to make sure you were clear, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be liable for paying us that, because what Adam just said.
Okay, oh, okay, so you'd put a slot.
Yeah, you're not liable for, general uses, has nothing to do with you. It's just you have a, her trailhead is now public, so if somebody came through, it's the way Texas Parks and Wildlife does it as well, it's just panchoos.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate you staying.
Thank you.
Long enough to give us that insight. All right, so council, we are to this approving ordinance 2015-26. I was a little unclear about Park and Recs suggested are that the vehicular entry be $2, but $1 is our current fee. about um Park and Recs suggested are that the vehicular entry be two dollars, but one dollar is our current fee. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And ATV is now twelve, they suggested fifteen.
Fifteen.
All right. So um and then you created some new levels, uh ten visit for a hundred and twenty dollars. Is that right?
That's a pass. And it would, it would go off of a card with a barcode reader. We have the ability to do it. So you would, they would get a savings and then we get the upfront money, obviously, that they have to purchase the entire amount.
So in our uh schedule of fees that uh Patricia did for us where she kind of pulled it all together, is the only thing that's changing is Trophy Club Park entry fees?
Yes, sir.
And so going from one to two, twelve to fifteen, twenty-five down to twenty for the annual pass, non-resident? Did I read that right?
Non-resident vehicular annual pass.
Yeah.
We, we don't have one currently.
Well, the sheet said non-resident vehicular annual pass was twenty-five, but what I thought I saw was Park and Rec suggested twenty.
Yeah, that's what the board ended up. It was twenty dollars.
So is, okay, so is what's printed on the sheet what we are currently?
Yes, those are from the existing.
So we have a non-resident vehicular annual pass?
Those are from the existing ordinances.
All right, okay. So if someone moved the twenty fifteen dash twenty-six, is there anything listed in it for fees? Or do we have to include all of this in the motion?
It's listed.
It's listed?
Yes.
And it's the Park and Recs recommendations or our current?
Parks and Rec.
All right.
So you want me to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm ready.
I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance twenty fifteen dash twenty-six.
I'll second.
So I have a motion. Did, how did it deal with the horse?
Three dollars.
But three dollars per what or?
Horse entry.
What?
Horse entry, three dollars.
And so how does that affect what she's saying? Is that, that's not affecting her and her business?
Because we don't have a, we don't have an agreement with her currently.
Okay.
That would be something that we would have to work out with her and bring forward to council.
But if you pass, right.
And y'all would consider it separately tonight is you're looking at the fee schedule and deciding, do you want these fees? And then we can, we can work with um the ranch to bring forward some type of agreement and that's something you guys can consider and say, ma- you know, debate the merits of the pros and cons and go from there.
Okay, all right. All right, so I have a motion by Schaffner, a second by Rowe to approve the schedule of fees in the ordinance twenty fifteen, twenty-six. Any other discussion?
Just when are we bringing baseball and soccer and all the other things scheduled?
Steven, you got an answer for that?
Uh, baseball, um I was trying to get through budget and everything before we brought gate fees. This was something dealing with Trophy Club Park. We think the park's going to open October. And so we wanted to get these going so as the park opens, any type of new fee can open concurrently with it. Gate fees is something that uh Adam and I have talked a lot about and the plan is to bring that uh in October to you for consideration. We don't have any tournaments scheduled right now, so we knew we had some time. And so that's why we, we've done a lot of research and work on it. We just, we're, we're just kind of waiting.
And I might add too, it may be good to have the sports subcommittee just look at that and maybe meet with y'all when you have something ready and then we can bring it to council and boom, have something good.
All right, so the only other thing I would say before I vote is um I would sure hope that we can move fairly rapidly on an agreement with Mrs. Doran to, to get that done. I don't want to jeopardize what she's doing by doing a three dollar fee. And I'm not in favor of cameras and a bunch of accounting stuff. It's like.
Neither are we.
Yeah.
I just, but you know how I feel, but Philip has cameras at his house. We can.
Borrow those.
We can borrow those.
A lot, a lot of cameras.
Sure, three dollars every time I go by. Okay, all those in favor of uh the motion to approve twenty fifteen dash twenty-six, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. I think it was unanimous if I saw correctly. Thank you, Ms. Doran. Item fifteen, receive update regarding fiscal year twenty fifteen dash twenty-six budget. Discussion and provide direction to staff regarding same. Uh council, you had uh items in your packet with, showed a new budget and a new letter from Steven and outline page that showed differences. Uh the thing I never did was um what was the net of all the differences on the final page? Does anybody know? I want to know what the net effect was. Steven doesn't have that off the top of his head?
I, I don't. We had, we had differences in the estimates that we had made for the current year. And then we had some, had a couple of changes uh with uh the proposed uh FY sixteen budget. Uh I believe the differences uh as far as the general fund goes, we uh, we decreased uh personnel costs in one area by about thirty-four hundred dollars. And then one, one item that council took action on at the previous meeting was to pay for fifteen thousand dollars of the Harmony Park Playground with the two thousand and ten GO. Uh so when you take that and we also had uh other personnel costs and HR, uh in total, we picked up about a little over sixteen thousand dollars to the positive uh with the result of the uh changes.
Okay, so a net of about sixteen thousand?
Right, for the general fund.
Okay, for the general fund. Thank you. Anybody have any questions or amendments at this point? Uh unless you make changes tonight, what we look at on the twenty-second, we probably won't try to change or we'd have to recalculate all the rates.
Yeah, please don't do that.
At the last minute, I'm going to make a motion.
In other words, speak now or forever hold your peace is what he's saying.
We will get sales tax once more, so we'll adjust uh that portion of the revenue. It will be just a slight adjustment based on what we get for uh this month. Um other than that, there's, you know, unless, unless anybody has changes or comments, uh what you.
I'm withholding my uh nickel-nick adjustment till the last minute.
Lock the uh, the police budget in the next two years on the stipend, so.
We'll fix that.
We're going to fix that.
I'm sure every one of you read that.
We did.
All right, uh we will then move on to item sixteen. Town council, that's town council, town manager Sodell's update regarding the following discussion and provide input regarding same Pet Fest Trophy Club Clean-up, Highway one fourteen Sound Wall. Steven?
Uh yes, Pet Fest uh will be September nineteenth from nine AM to noon. This is our seventh Pet Fest that we've had. Um but we've, I think it's gotten bigger every year. People love it. Uh we're going to have twenty-five plus vendors there available. And we're going to be offering low-cost vaccines, vaccines, vaccinations for your, for your pets, for your dogs. So um that's always, it's always a, a neat event. Uh Trophy Club Park Cleanup, uh our volunteer website is up and we've had volunteers beginning today to clean the park up. Uh the main event though is on September twenty-sixth and that's Restore the Park. And we're going to try to, that's also the day of the crud cruiser and uh get rid of your bulk items and your shredding. So it's sort of like cleanup, cleanup the town day. Uh for those people who volunteer to clean up the park, we have ordered hats. And it says on the side, it has Trophy Club, it has the logo, Town and Trophy Club. On the side, it has embroidered Restore the Park on it. So it's an, maybe an incentive for people to come volunteer. You get a, you get a hat um that you can only get by helping clean up the park, so.
Does taking pictures count?
Does this motion count?
So what, when is the clean, when is the park cleanup?
September twenty-sixth. And uh we have volunteers signing up uh in two hour slots. And uh all, we've approached all the churches to participate as well. We think we're going to have a really good turnout. Um lots of people are very interested and, and I think it's a, it's a good community event. It helps clean up the park. It'll help get it open sooner. And it counts towards our FEMA twenty-five percent contribution. So there's all good things.
All the labor hours we donate.
That's right. So that's why the volunteers, that's a big thing for us is so that uh we can get the FEMA reimbursement at seventy-five percent. And most of our contribution hopefully will all be through volunteer man-hours. So um please come out and volunteer and if you've got questions, please call Sherry or Jacob or I guess Adam too for any type of questions or details. We're going to have information on the website, you know, typical, uh try to get it out there to as, as many people as possible. And then on the Sound Wall, um staff had a meeting with TechDOT and uh to discuss a couple of items regarding one fourteen. We anticipate that that contract, that the plans will be finalized in February of twenty sixteen. It will be let in tw- in probably May of twenty sixteen. And why that's important is because we have concerns about where the Sound Wall will be running from essentially Beck Park uh east to about the church, uh the church, towards the Church of Christ. And TechDOT wants to place that in the right, in their right-of-way, which is about five to ten feet or so off the road. We want it on the rear property line of those homeowners. They want to put in an eight-foot wall. We want to put in at least a ten-foot wall. A lot of those properties sit lower, so the wall's value is diminished because it's not high enough. So um those are things uh I've communicated to the district engineer, kind of what our plans are. Westlake supports our plans. Our biggest thing is we don't want to create a no man's land uh between uh the back of the wall, uh if it's in, within TechDOT right-of-way and those property owners. It's not just for us, uh for the maintenance aspects. It's also for Encore. Uh it's for any other utility providers that may be located in there. It's just not a good plan. And so um we also care about the aesthetics. Right now is our opportunity to have some say in what it's called form liners. And those form liners are what create the designs. You know, unfortunately, we got some of what I like to call the corduroy on the west side of town. We want to work with Westlake to make sure that it's painted uh in the color schemes that we want, so we don't have to come back and do that later. And also that the form liner from an aesthetic perspective is something that, that we would like to live with. Westlake supports this. They're a good partner to have in those meetings as well. And so uh that's something that we're going to keep working on. We're going to try to schedule another meeting with TechDOT to help uh persuade where that wall needs to go. It really needs to match what's on the west side of town, past Trophy Lake. Uh that is set back on the property line and we've asked that before and they're like, well, that's not in the rules. We're like, well, the rules in this case don't make any sense. Because you created this no man's land, so.
Have they told you why they're resistant to putting it where you've asked them to put it, why they want to go?
Because their policy, their policy says it goes in the right-of-way. And, and this case, that doesn't make sense because the road's being expanded, the access road is there. It, you know, it's just the way the topography is set up and the way that it's.
The Encore easement alone seems like reason enough to, to, uh my question is regarding the western Sound Wall, which was the rear of my property line from December two thousand and four to April twenty thirteen. And I thought it was great because I didn't have to maintain a fence back there. When I tried to sell my house, I found out other people had better hearing than me. But anyway, um I think it's like twelve feet.
It may be, it, it's either ten or twelve. It's taller than eight. We know that. And so that's what our point is, is number one, the west side Sound Wall is on the rear property line. And then uh it's taller than eight feet. And you know, our, our position would, we would want at least twelve feet. We may get ten, but we're pushing for as much as we can because, you know, those homeowners that back up there, they, we need to try to mitigate that noise. We want it, the taller the better. Um but you know, TechDOT sometimes has its own.
Well, and, and that's why I say that is we may, we'll have to prepare to probably whatever we end up could well be shorter than what's over there, so.
Yeah, and we're trying to get on that now and, and make those uh comments made, make sure that those who have some influence know kind of what our objections are and kind of what we would like to see long-term. And so um we're working on it.
Yeah, and you, you've involved Andy Eads and.
That's correct.
And his crew to try to manage that project for us because they're very much involved in what happens in that entire thing.
I'll keep you guys posted.
Uh item seventeen, items for future agenda to include discussion of agenda items for consideration on the upcoming regular session. Council agenda for September twenty-second meeting and discussion of future agenda. Anybody have any comments about the September twenty-second agenda? Most of it are, a lot of it is housekeeping things we have to do on that. We're uh doing board appointments, approving the budget, um assessment role and dealing with signs. Is that right? If that gets back to us? Was that on here?
Yes, sir.
Anybody have anything with this?
I'm also going to have uh Tom Baitenhurst from GSBS attend.
That was my last, that was my next question.
Yes.
Uh because I, I wanted to say, I would like for us to pick a, a date so we can adequately publicize it and we make sure that all the council is there for our public forum, whatever you might want to call that, to talk about the new facility.
I should have some more information for you guys uh later this week. One thing that I'm, I'm going to, the goal is to have a contract for you to review and hopefully authorize. Uh as I mentioned to you, I've, I've kind of nickled and dined them down to about seven hundred and forty-nine thousand on the professional services fees. Um there's still, that doesn't include some things like some civil work and whatnot, but for architecture and their part, that's where it was. It was at eight hundred and twenty thousand. So we need to handle that. The other thing that I'm going to want to have a discussion about that evening is what do we want to do about any type of sole amendments or suspended slab? He's going to bring information regarding that. He's also going to bring information regarding what the differences between a hard bid and a CMAR, or construction manager at risk. If I were going to make a recommendation to you tonight, I'd say uh construction manager at risk is the better option to do. It, I think uh any type of savings goes into your pocket versus a contractor's pocket. If there's a markup or something like that, we have the ability to manage it. But we're going to talk about the pros and cons. And because we're going to need to start getting that person engaged or at least soliciting for those uh, for those services.
Okay, so any other, those, the things you were just talking about are things that are going to be part of the twenty-second agenda?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody else have anything on the twenty-second agenda?
Yeah, you, you might just add that finance subcommittee just to get that out of the way, so we don't forget that. That was part of that earlier motion that we approved.
The CFA repeal motion?
Yes, okay.
Just to kind of.
Because it's not on this.
Tidy up that.
Okay, you got that one? All right, and then we, uh anything about um future agenda items?
We want to reclassify number three. We've done the first section of that basically, with parking on Parkview and Park Lane. But we still have uh maybe adding a parking lot between.
Sure, we could clear the history out of it and just clean it up.
Yeah, we're, I've talked to Tom Rutledge about that and began exploring. We wanted to get through Lakeview and kind of look at what we can do over there by uh Indy West.
So Holly, we're wanting to clean up item three, get rid of all the history and just let it be um.
Garrett's.
Okay.
Edition.
Act, appropriate action, uh adding a parking lot between the baseball fields. Is that description enough for everybody? All right, anything else?
Yeah, I would, I would like to remove item twelve. I did a little research on this. And the US Code Title Four, Chapter One uh is very specific that, that does not give us the authority to do what, what we were trying to attain.
However, what US Code Chapter Twelve also does, it doesn't enforce those who violate it on a daily basis. For example, the US Post Office does it on a daily basis. Every sporting event where a flag is unfroiled horizontally across the field is an unenforced violation of that same code. Uh there's many others where the code's written as a guideline and uh it's not enforced in many, many, many cases. In fact, every time you put a stamp on an envelope with a flag, you're violating that code. And so, you know, since it's a, a guide code that's, that's not strongly enforced, that's why I made this proposal. Because there are exceptions to the rule that are frequently allowed.
But it gives very, very, very specific reasons for the president and the governor to do what they do. And I think we're stepping on that authority that's given to them.
All right, so I have one council member who wants to have this discussion, one uh saying doesn't see a need for doing that based on the code. Give me some more guidance, council, as to what you'd like to do there. You want to discuss it, not discuss it?
I just bear with me, explain the code. You can't put, you can't lick a stamp with a flag on it. What, what are we talking about?
Yeah, the way the code is written, there are certain guidelines for how you respectfully handle the flag. And when you could, when you could do this with it or that with it, how, when you, when it's hung vertically, when it's hung horizontally, uh when there's a speaker at a podium. Well, one of the things is the code says that you should not put the flag at half-staff unless directed by the President of the United States or the, the governor of your state. Uh but again. Uh, but again, these other code violations about how it's displayed are violated every day. A stamp on a United States postage stamp is a violation of the flag code, uh, because it is, is a representative of a flag, not the flag itself, and it's not properly displayed. Uh, when a flag is unfurled at a sports arena before the Super Bowl and the Jets fly overhead, that is a violation of the flag code, and yet it's held up by men and women of the armed forces.
Okay, so...
And they wave it.
But you want to be able to, to, uh, lower the flag when there's a, a death?
If there, if there's a specific circumstance where we feel like, like in the case of this officer that was killed, uh, you know, and, or in the case of, uh, uh, military members being assassinated by a terrorist, unfortunately, there's an administration, in my particular view, that is not eager to recognize the military soldiers who give their lives, uh, away from the battlefield, like in this case. And I think that, uh, as Americans, we should be able to say, okay, we should be able to speak out as a community and say, we respect those military men and women, and we'll honor them by lowering the flag to half-staff, even if the president decides to wait a week and a half.
It's, but see, one time, sorry, but you want the mayor to issue a proclamation? Don't, doesn't the proclamation have to be approved by the council?
Well, if, if we have, that the mayor has the authority in advance, if we make that a, a, a standing policy, that he can notify the police chief and the fire chief to lower the flags to half-staff, and that's a policy that's on the books as a, as a, uh, an authority he has or one of his designees, we don't have to have the council meet. That's just his right, uh, in the event of a terrorist attack on American military installations or whatever.
So, in, in a case, let's say where, uh, hopefully never happens, but, uh, we're involved in a house fire, one of our, uh, fireman dies in a fire.
Right.
If we wanted as a local organization to say, we're gonna fly our flag at half-staff in honor of him and his sacrifice, we couldn't do that today.
Not today?
Oh, you could, because you have local jurisdiction. That's your jurisdiction. You know, the state, the governor has jurisdiction, national, the president has jurisdiction.
So, local can do something?
Yes.
Not according to the flag code.
Yes, they can.
President and the, and the governor.
No, i- if you read in there, it says local jurisdiction.
Patricia just gave me the symbol.
I guess the other thing is...
Excuse me, we are discussing it, and, uh, it sounds like we need to discuss it, so we'll leave it there. Thank you, Patricia, for...
Well, I, I just have an issue with, when the current administration...
No, that's, that's discussion. I, I appreciate you...
We want it on there.
All right, there are at least enough people that wanna talk about it, so we'll do that. All right. Washington! Okay, uh, it, uh, is, uh, eleven oh three, or something like that, and, uh, the council is going to, uh, convene into executive session pursuant to the following designated sections of the Texas Government Code, annotated Chapter five fifty-one, the Texas Open Meeting Act. The council will convene into closed executive session to discuss the following. Texas Government Code, Section five fifty-one point oh seven one one, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation, and Section five fifty-one point oh seven one two, consultation with attorney in order to consult with its attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney of the governmental body under disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Department of Texas clearly conflict with the Texas Open Meetings Act. A, legal advice regarding litigation threatened against the Town and Trophy Club, municipal utility district number one relative to wastewater treatment plant. B, legal advice regarding the Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One, request for hearing under town subdivision regulations, town government regulations, and letter from T C Mud One regarding temporary suspension for new sewer commitments to district manager, district wastewater treatment plant. Uh, so, we are in executive session. Uh, Steve and I assume that you were gonna have, uh...
Yeah.
Pat and...
That's correct.
All right, uh, so, uh, council, um, we did receive an email during our meeting.
Pay attention.
Counsel, if you will come to order, it is, uh, fourteen minutes after midnight, uh, on the, uh, whatever today's date is that's opposite from our agenda, twenty, the ninth, and council is back in regular concession. Item nineteen, consider and take appropriate action regarding the executive session. I would recognize council member Rowe for a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, uh, set a date for a special meeting of council for the purpose of a hearing regarding, uh, waivers requested by the Trophy Club Mud, uh, for the date of September twenty-eighth, uh, time at seven PM.
Do you have a second? Kurt seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It is unanimous.
I motion we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Garrett Reed to adjourn, and a second by Rod and Rowe. All in favor, raise your hand. We are adjourned at, uh, twelve fifteen AM.